Okay, well, let's try it.
We are ready, we'll get everything started.
Well, let's try it.
Okay.
I think we've tried to begin a couple of times. All right. Good morning, everyone. It's Wednesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and we have some special guests in the house this morning. We have ROTC instructor Nicole Sephurian. I've only known you by Nicole, so I apologize if I... Did I pronounce your last name correctly? Anyway, Nicole is incredible, and she's kind of... You're kind of like a proud mama. You have ROTC here from Reno High School. Good morning. We're excited in honor of Veterans Day that you are going to present our nation's flag. And I would like to introduce Captain Lillian Hale, First Sergeant Michaela Brown, Staff Sergeant Matthew Segua, Lieutenant Colonel Athena McHemmy. So, good morning, and we're excited to have you here. Everyone, please rise. All right. Thank you so very much. Do you want to come and say a few words? It was so wonderful to get to meet all of you. It's wonderful. Well... You're our future, future mayor's, right?
Yeah.
Future senators, right? Yeah, okay, good. All right. Glad you guys think for coming. Come anytime. Anytime. Great job. All right, bye. Okay, I'm gonna hand it over... Well, let's see, I probably should send it to you, Madam Clerk, and then I can go back to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we'll move on to item A2, roll call. Councilmember Breckus.
I'm here.
Dour.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Ebert, absent at this time. Taylor.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Shivi.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Okay, thank you so much. Would you like us to go into a proclamation or a public comment? Let's go to proclamation.
Yep, let's go ahead and open with a proclamation.
Okay, I'm gonna send it over to Vice Mayor Dour. Go ahead.
All right, thank you so much. Thanks, everyone, for being here. I'd like to call up Emily Kidd. Emily, thanks for joining us. Today is International Fraud Awareness Week, or today is during International Fraud Awareness Week. And we really want to raise awareness about the impacts of fraud in our society. Sadly, I have been the victim several times. Very recently, in fact, even just two months ago, where I had to close all of my bank accounts and reopen them all. Because, and I'm just gonna say my experience, because it's common, wrote a check, and someone else reproduced all the information on my check onto another check, and then just used it for about $10,000, and then another $10,000. So in a minute, you've... You're down 20,000, which isn't good for anyone. Luckily, our bank, in this case, our Bank of America Bank, was right all over it. We are still recovering two months later, because you have auto deposit, you know, auto pay, all of those things. And when you close your accounts, those aren't paying. So suddenly, you're hearing from all your debtors or debt agencies saying you haven't paid your bill, and now you owe us another X amount of money. So it takes months to untangle from something like this. The last time it happened was about 12 years ago, and that one was even worse. That was about 60,000. And it went on for a good six months to a year. In fact, sometimes I feel like we're still suffering from it. So Emily, thank you for putting this in front of us, and would you read the proclamation?
Of course. Thank you for the introduction. Whereas this week marks the observance of International Fraud Awareness Week, which is set aside to raise awareness about the impact of fraud upon our society. And whereas the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, an organization dedicated to reducing the incidence of fraud worldwide, estimates that a typical organization loses 5% of its revenue each year to fraud. And whereas instances of fraud in local governments undermines the good work and reputation of all employees who complete their assigned duties with integrity and honesty, and decreases confidence in public officials. Now whereas government agencies are frequent targets of fraud, and fraud against the city of Reno is a burden borne by citizens and businesses in the form of increased costs, loss of public revenues and resources, and increased expenses associated with the investigation, prosecution, and eventual incarceration of individuals who commit fraud. And whereas tips received from employees are consistently the greatest source which frauds are detected, and increasing employee awareness of fraud, educating employees about prevention, detective, detection, and reporting techniques are critical for reducing fraud involving local government. Now therefore, on behalf of Hillary Shivi, Mayor of the city of Reno, do hereby declare November twelfth through the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as International Fraud Awareness Week.
All right, thank you so much, Emily. So every kind of fraud, I mean, do you want to just say one more thing from your own personal experience? Because it's you doing this.
Yeah, fraud awareness is something that I'm really trying to promote more in our organization as we move towards a maturity model where we have processes in place that are always running in the background, and informing our management of behavioral red flags of fraud is our first step in that mission, to just get the word out there. So employees do feel that they have a place to report it is also something really important. So our office is always open. I'm on the fifth floor. Can call me anytime.
Good job, Emily. You've done an incredible job here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate everything that you do. I did want to just point out, because I am getting kind of a lot of letters about it. Probably some people on their phone are noticing that they're getting some messages that are saying your package is trying to be delivered, you know, some of those kinds of things. So especially for our senior populations and people that are a little bit more vulnerable, because it's really easy to think that, oh, I have a package coming, and I need to click on it to find out where it is. Like, it'll say you have a package delay, so it's getting a lot of that into my office. And then also, when people call and ask you for money, always, you know, track down the source. We get... Actually, the Sheriff's Office just put out something saying that people were calling and saying we're the Sheriff's Department. So everyone, please be really mindful when you get those calls, because the Sheriff's Department will never call you and ask for money.
Yeah, asking that next question is generally how to keep yourself safe in those situations, and really taking a moment to take a beat, because one of the things that scam artists and fraudsters will do is increase your... The rapidity of which they want you to respond, and that's when you lose kind of your executive function and some of the things that you know you shouldn't do, you do. And it can happen to anyone in that moment. So just keeping that in mind and keeping a safe word for you and your family for those instances of a deep fake or something like that, someone pretending to be your, you know, your cousin or your grandchild or something like that. So have a word that your family only knows. And don't text it to each other, right? Because they can pull your data in the...
Yeah, and it keeps going.
So just keep it, keep it on the down low in your kitchen and let everyone know what...
And gift cards this time of year. Lots of scams for gift cards, so... All right, well, thank you.
Well, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say, in my case, that I... To close this out, when I got the call from B of A saying that you're having fraud, I didn't believe them. I called back using my own information to get to the fraud department rather than taking their call, because I felt that too could be a fraud. And that frustrated them a little bit. I would not speak to them, but so be it. Better safe than sorry, right?
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna send it right back to you. We're gonna go into public comment unless City Manager Thornley has any... Well, he's not here.
We're moving right along.
Do you have any updates on the agenda, Mr. City Manager? You do? Okay. Well, good. We'll let him put some updates, and then I'll send it back.
Well, we'll do that after public comment.
You want to do it after public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so members of the public may here observe and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, H T T P S colon forward slash forward slash L I N K S period R E N O period G O V forward slash three capital Z capital A H capital N cap... Capital K, capital J. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with Council rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disrupted behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If the behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Our first public commenter is Beth McMillan, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Diane McCormick.
Good morning, Beth.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Manager Thornley, and City Council. I'm here very briefly. I'm here to thank you very much for a grant that we received from the Arts and Culture Commission in the amount of $5,005 to support Pedrito Martinez, who is an amazing Afro-Cuban percussionist that performed on July the 12th in Wingfield Park as part of our cultural connections. And we'll be back in Wingfield Park next year, thankfully, and then we'll figure out next steps thereafter. I am gonna stop now, and we're gonna show a wrap-up video of what your investment did this year in 2023.
Thank you very much, and I'll see you next year.
Fantastic. And I had a lot of comments into my office about March 4th marching band. Everyone loves them. They love them. So thank you for bringing them back.
The only, the only way they got booked to the art town ever was when they first came around 2005, was because my birthday.
Well, very good. I get a lot of compliments on that, Beth, just so you know. Yeah. And we've got someone going, yes. Damians, yes.
Terry Brooks, followed by Diane McCormick, followed by Paul Leonard.
Hello. Good morning. Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today, I'd like to engage in the topic of discrimination when it comes to politics and age. There have been some politicians who have declined to help the elderly people, but would rather just leave them behind. In the year 1965, some politicians supported Medicare, which helped a lot of elderly people to receive a lot of health care. But there were some politicians who did not support Medicare for the rich to help support the elderly they did not think was fair. People who are elderly are more susceptible to illness, such as the coronavirus that causes a lot of elderly illness. Some politicians say our health care system has been biased against the elderly, while others say that the federal government should not help the elderly. When a lot of elderly people are sick and about to die, and some politicians don't want to help them, I just have to wonder why. Everyone has a right to live and do so in good health, even if they're elderly regardless of their lack of wealth. If someone doesn't want to help someone else who is in need, why won't they help them? Is it because of their own greed? Maybe it's because they don't want such people to help make the selection when it comes time to vote in the next election. When it comes to elections, the elderly are more likely to vote and are more likely to control government because of their vote. And because they have such influence when putting candidates in office, then they might be more likely to put more elderly people into office. Our elderly population keeps continuing to grow, and when it's time to go and vote, they are more likely to go. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I will keep all this in mind when I vote in the next election day.
Ah, I love it. Great job.
Thank you.
We're printing those too, right? So where are we at?
Oh, this is chapter nineteen, and just so you know, I've only got twenty-seven more chapters to go.
Good job. Great job, Terry.
Is my homeless book, is it being available to the public yet?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oh.
We're gonna do something special at Christmas.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Diane McCormick, followed by Paul Leonard, followed by Omar Namoga Tovar.
Good morning. It's been a while since I've been here. I recognize three faces, Mr. Madame Shivi, Madam Breckus. I was here when we were talking about the billboard industry. And at that time, I was a board member of Scenic Nevada. Now I'm just here as a person who has lived in Reno for fifteen years. I can't believe it's that long. I moved here in 2008 from Truckee, California, after the sudden death of my husband. My husband had been mayor of Truckee for two terms. And one of the things that he really was initiating was controlled growth. In 2008, when I moved here, the population of Reno was 219,000. Now it's 279,000. I am appalled by the lack of planning that has gone into the apartments, the houses, the growth. Verdai is an example. I don't live in Verdai, but it's an example. I live in Old Southwest. And the other day, I did drive down Riverside Drive to see the ugly five-story cement building that used to be in this beautiful park area. What is happening to our city? Why are you letting this happen? Uncontrolled growth is going to be the ruination of Reno. It's no longer the biggest little city in the world. It's gonna be the biggest, ugliest little city in the world. Please, when you consider these new building permits, consider what impact it's going to have on our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Paul Leonard, followed by Omar Namoga Tovar, followed by Louis Magrill.
Greetings, members of the city council, Madam Mayor.
She'll be back in a minute.
She'll be back. It's okay. Recently in the mail, I got my new voting card, and apparently now I'm a member of Ward Six. Nearly created, I guess. I don't even know what that is, but that's fine. Things change. The apartment complex that I live in and have lived in for more than ten years now has changed hands several times. Surprisingly, it's never been to my benefit. I am retired after decades in respiratory therapy. I was a well-paid worker at the time that I was in the workforce. I was a skilled worker. I made a respectable amount. But at this point, due to some things that are my own fault, but also many things that are not, like the housing crash of 2002, 2007 to 2008, I am basically a person with no real assets other than the social security and the purse that I rely on every month. And my rent is always overtaking the social security. Now, I know you're gonna have proposals put before you today for an expansion of some types of housing. I would only like to suggest that there's an inherent bias in favor of the high-income end of the population so that the markets can go ahead and take as much as it can in the housing market. This is not a solution. As the lady before indicated, growth has to be managed. And growth is not just a matter of extensive growth, but the articulation of growth among which sectors of the population are affected how. I have recently joined the Reno Sparks Tenant Union, which is at the moment more of an aspiration than an organization. But that's okay. Without aspiration, we may as well just lie down and die. And guess what? We aren't gonna do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Omar Namoga Tovar, followed by Louis Magrill.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Omar Namoga. I am the immigrant justice organizer by Make the Road Nevada. And I am here to speak in support of Agenda Item E1, which is introducing of the ordinance in relation to Senate Bill 92, or como dicen los vendedores en Las Vegas, la ley nueve dos. When the bill was introduced in the Eighty-Second Legislature, the intention was to address the unfair targeting of this vulnerable, vulnerable community to allow sideways vendors to operate free of fear and harassment and create pathways to becoming legitimate small business. Queríamos y queremos ayudarlos. This ordinance is introduced will accomplish the will's intentions. Make the Road Nevada is appreciate of this council and city-state of keeping vendors at the forefront of this process. We hope other jurisdictions in Clark County follow suit. Queremos que nos ayuden para que ellos puedan seguir trabajando y puedan seguir creciendo con sus familias. Thank you for your time, y gracias por seguir legislando pensando en las minorías. Have a good day.
Thank you, Omar. Thank you for being here.
Louis Magrill, followed by Phoenix Coller, followed by Art Rangel.
Hello, City Council and Mayor Shivi, who I hope will hear this as well as everyone else. Thank you for having me. My name is Louis Magrill. And I'm here today to talk about item D2 on the agenda, which is Jacob's Entertainment's proposed status updates and whatever else they'll be presenting on today regarding the Neon Line District. So-called Neon Line Districts, I don't know a single person who has ever referred to it outside of developer proposals and those with invested buy-in to developer portfolios. But that is the name in which we are, I think, attempting to gentrify, in my opinion is the best word for it, the city of Reno. I do not think that that is the right direction that our city needs to be moving in. I don't think that we should be giving to Jacob's Entertainment the time of day, much less all of the financial and political support that they have received via this council. Luxury housing isn't for me. It's not for anyone I know. I think that they are doing a lot of this in the name of workforce development. I'm a grad student. I know a lot of grad students. I know a lot of students who have come out of UNR programs and are now working professionals in the last year or two. These housing apartments are not for them either. I know people who are, you know, burgeoning professionals, making their way up in the world, paying over 50% of their rents for apartments that 10 years ago would have cost half that less, mostly for, you know, a nice paint job, maybe an updated refrigerator. I don't think that that represents the city of Reno I know of, and I don't think that we should be kowtowing to the Jacob's Entertainment developer industry here. You know, there's a... They say that they're gonna build 10% of affordable housing units with these proposals. For example, the Bonanza Inn, a lot that they are proposing to buy. First of all, 10% to me seems nonsensical. The housing crisis extends far past 10% need. For the Bonanza Inn, I think 10% of affordable units comes out to five or six units, which I think all of us could agree is not quite sufficient to meet the needs of the affordable housing community or the community that needs that level of housing. That's, of course, you know, when they build the housing in the first place. It does seem like Jacob's Entertainment has largely been investing in the tearing down of motels for the production of empty lots. As far as I'm aware, at least, I do live right next to the Neon Line District, and I get to see those beautiful colored fences with nothing behind them every single day. And so I question why we are working so hard to subsidize the development of empty lots. I would ask the city council to stop incentivizing Jacob's Entertainment and to renegotiate with the Reno Housing Authority to reinvest in actual affordable housing development. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Louis.
Phoenix Coller, followed by Art Rangel, followed by Holly Brown.
Hello, my name is Phoenix Coller, and I'm here with the Reno Sparks Tenants Union. I'm here to express my views on Jacob's Entertainment takeover of downtown Reno. The development agency that Jacob's representatives are updating, or the development agreement, sorry, that Jacob's is updating the council on today could have included requirements for affordable housing, but the city chose not to create them. This means that Jacob's promises of 10% affordable housing are empty. Additionally, this 10% would only replace about half of the housing that is already destroyed by tearing down motels. What are the city council's plans to ensure that it does not construct only luxury apartments? It should be important to the city to have housing downtown that its residents can actually afford to live in. Additionally, I'm here to voice my concern regarding the ways in which the city council has facilitated the sale of downtown Reno to Jacob's Entertainment. We should not be giving tax credits and deferrals to wealthy developers to tear down motels and leave vacant lots. People are being displaced now, not only by the destruction of the motels, but through the rising rent prices that their gentrification of downtown is causing. If we are forced to accept Jacob's Entertainment in Reno, the public should benefit through their presence, and we should... the public should benefit through their presence and we should receive tax revenue that is dedicated to building affordable public housing. Will City Council commit to no longer offering tax credits, subsidies, and deferrals to a wealthy out-of-state corporation? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Art Rangel, followed by Holly Brown.
Mr. Rangel, we haven't seen you for quite a while.
Good mornings, uh council and city staff. Uh my name is Art Rangel. I'm at two five five North Sierra Street here in Reno. And I'm here also to talk about item two, three on your agenda regarding the Neon Line uh Development Agreement Review. This development uh agreement encompasses a large portion of downtown Reno. There have been a lot of comments over time, and you just heard some now, regarding the vacant land that now exists as a result of Mr. Jacobs taking down many old blighted motels along Fourth Street and Second Street. While these vacant parcels are not now improved with productive uses, I would encourage the council not to push to have Mr. Jacobs build just anything on these very valuable parcels. It's not unusual to have a development agreement for uh properties that take up this much land to have a twenty-year life. So that as market conditions change and the development can be accomplished during an upmarket, we clearly do not have enough market right now. What is peculiar, given my experience in working on development agreements, is a lack of specificity in the Neon Line Development Agreement. The city of Reno Zone and Code allows a wide variety of uses to be built on these downtown parcels. Given the way the current Zone and Code is written, some of the allowable uses could be incompatible with other uses also allowed in that district or in those districts. The recent pandemic turned our world upside down, disrupting how we live our lives and delaying everyone's plans. I'm convinced we will not see office buildings built on the Neon Line Parcels for decades or even ever. Um because of remote working that has become norm now even after COVID. I'm sure Mr. Jacobs is very aware of this. Downtown Reno has an opportunity for a much-needed workforce housing for medical workers, police and fire personnel, and other downtown employees. In addition, live-work laws should be built downtown once the market improves, interest rates decline, and inflation gets under control. This could create a walkable, walkable community and reduce traffic congestion. It would be very helpful if Mr. Jacobs would reveal his master plan for the twenty square blocks comprised of the Neon Line District. We'd like to to know what proposed uses on the south side of Retract would be connected to the J Resort with a pedestrian uh uh walkway. We'd like also to hear a discussion relative to item three point oh two K in the staff report relative to public safety, because public safety, especially during nighttime hours, is of great concern to downtown residents. And lastly, I'd ask the count, the city, to make certain that the Neon Line master plan or anything else that's built in that district is consistent with the Reno master plan goals and policies as required by state law. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much, Mr. Rangel. Back to you, Mayor, unless you want me to keep going.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
Okay, uh is there another public comment?
Holly Brown, followed by Bill Sims.
My name is Holly. I'm a member of the Reno Sparks Tenants Union. I want to start by letting City Council know that gone are the days when you can just sell off Reno to the highest bidder and make life hell for tenants without any pushback. We are building tenant power here in Reno, and we will ensure that you work for your actual constituents, not just landlords and developers. I'm here to voice my concern about the actions of Jacob's Entertainment and the way in which City Council and our local government has been complicit. Not only have you incentivized Jacobs to buy up and destroy much of the affordable, low-barrier housing in downtown Reno, but you have also allowed the properties he bought to sit empty for years. I want to know, is the City Council honestly so deluded to think that replacing affordable housing with luxury apartments is gonna solve the fact that most people cannot afford their rent? All I see all over Reno is luxury apartments being built. Apartments that run over a thousand dollars for a studio. And you keep saying that somehow this is gonna magically solve the fact that about half of Reno's rent burdened. If we look at history, that never brings down the rent. What brings down the rent is public housing, caps on what landlords can charge, and decommodifying housing, so it's no longer used as an investment rather than a place to live. To me, it's obvious you are gonna make the problem worse, and it's just an excuse you're using to facilitate the extraction of money from our communities into developer and landlord pockets. As of twenty twenty-two, Jacobs has destroyed about six hundred affordable housing units and has pledged to make ten percent in his new complexes affordable will only replace about half of these. Not to mention, these motels were low-barrier entry housing. Is Jacobs going to allow people with bad credit to live in these motels? Do those people deserve to live on the streets? It's honestly disgusting how you all have condemned people to live on the streets while packaging it up by saying you're improving downtown. It is clear to me that by improving downtown, you mean you want to remove the people who live in downtown. As a renter myself, I am extremely, extremely concerned about the effect Jacob's Entertainment and all the other developers you're incentivizing to build luxury apartments will have on my ability to afford housing. As an actual resident of Reno, not just some fairy tale, a random courtyard of signs does not improve my living experience here. A rebranded casino does not improve my living experience here. New luxury apartments that I cannot afford do not improve my living experience here. New coffee shops and restaurants that I cannot afford do not improve my living experience here. What would improve my living experience is being able to actually afford my rent. I demand that City Council begin to rein in these developers and landlords so that actual working-class people can afford to live here, while not spending more than half of their income on rent.
All right. Thank you very much, Holly. Very heartfelt.
Damian Cole, followed by Bill Sims.
Morning. I'm going to change my public comment because I feel that the discussion that was just had is very important. I was gonna talk about bikeways again, but two thousand and seven, I came to this town with three dollars to my name and a bag full of luck. At the time, the lowest place that I was able to find rent for, uh and this was with an actual lease, was a studio which was formerly known as a uh hotel room. It was the Speakeasy Hotel that's been converted to apartment buildings, uh was going for about three hundred and twenty a month. I had free check cashing all down the strip. I had available uh uh I mean, Reno downtown was so set back then. Now unfortunately, the casino industry has doubt declined, which has forced Jacobs, the Coronos, to seek other means of funding such as entertainment, whatever that is. It's like kind of ambiguous, but the thing that I've noticed a lot of people saying um about the West Edition, which Jacobs is pretty much demolished, uh is that it's housing, the 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 motels were housing. I would actually disagree with that. Um and disagree in favor of those who say it was accessible. It was lodging. What's the difference? I used to deliver their mail, by the way. Lodging was basically no background check, twenty bucks, you have a place to stay. That kept people off the streets, hundreds of people off the streets. They were roach-infested. They were miserable. I used to be able to smell them just from being in the courtyard. It was bad, but this is the area that I think should really be considered for the missing middle housing that we're all talking about. Not only are we looking at the bikeway projects and 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 for the Reno Downtown Corridor, this would be prime real estate for Jacobs to create that very needed missing middle housing. We're talking about mid-rise condos, apartments, and townhouses. Turn Third Street and Commercial, lid the trench all the way down to Keystone and create a public plaza and park where you can create a full-scale bikeway and places for people to sit and relax and hang out, get rid of the exhaust fumes from the trench that's coming off of the from the trains and everything, into the words, finish what was already begun with Retract Plaza. That's and anyway, so yeah, it really it does come down to, you know, where we are moving toward. I would not have been able to make it in the city. I was downtrodden. I was I was in a really bad place. And I came here because my friend said, hey, I can get you a job. She worked at a temp agency. That gave me a chance. Within the end of the weekend, Boomtown, I had a hundred and twenty-eight bucks because I put three dollars down on a blackjack bet and it just kept on rising. That's not really what the city is about anymore. And it's, yeah, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dam- Damian.
Bill Sims.
Morning, Mayor. Morning, uh City Council members. My name, of course, is Bill Sims, and I just wanted to get out real quick um to basically echo everything that um my fellow advocates have said. And I also just wanted to add uh in general that uh you know, whenever I mention my income to you guys, the fact I'm on social security, I'm disabled. I just tried having a job, had to quit because of my health issues. Um it's looking like I will never be able to have a job to do with my disability. And so because of the fact that I'm only on nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, um I know there's really like nothing you guys can do about anything that's current with Jacob's Entertainment, but I would sincerely hope that you guys do decline any kind of bids they might make in the future. Because if you're going to tell me that you understand my situation, but you can't imagine what it's like, and then you allow Jacobs to come in and continue to build luxury apartments or quote affordable housing when as someone on the nine hundred and thirty-four dollar income a month, I won't even be able to afford workforce housing, that's not affordable housing. That's affordable housing and wolf's clothing. So I just hope that if there are any future bids from Jacob's Entertainment down the road, as I'm sure there will be, that again, if you're gonna tell me that you understand my situation, but you don't necessarily know what it's like to come from a situation, and then you continue to allow uh companies like Jacob's Entertainment to come in, destroy welcome housing, even though I know the defense would come up of it's roach-infested, bedbug-infested. Yes, I understand how horrible that can be. I've dealt with it in my own complex in welcome housing, but this much I can say as someone who is disabled. Housing and a roof is better than no housing and being told by Jacob's Entertainment, well, you can do this for two years or you're on the streets. So I sincerely do hope you guys actually do hold Jacob's entertainment feet to the fire to actually make sure that they hold out their end as a bargain on actual affordable housing. If it's above my income, it's not affordable. I just want to make that perfectly clear because I know all of you are on six-figure incomes. So you don't know affordable housing when we all had to struggle with rent, food, bills. You guys don't know the struggle. You may have one point, but you currently don't in twenty twenty-three. So I really do hope that you guys listen to the people who actually will be affected by this as we continue to turn Reno into a renter city. That's not helping anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, we did, that will uh conclude our public comment just for the record. And we did have one commenter who was present earlier but had to leave. Um Katie Worrell is in opposition of item D two. Additionally, we received three comments or voicemails, which were general in nature and not directly associated with an agenda item prior to yesterday four P M. These comments were written for written correspondence or voicemails. They have been transcribed and provided to the Reno City Council and are a part of the meeting on Reno.gov forward slash meetings. Three voicemails in concern. With that, we have no additional public comment and are moving on to item A four, approval of the agenda.
All right. Before, before we do that, I'm losing my voice. I'm gonna send it over to our city manager if you have any updates to this agenda.
That's me. I'm item A four. Um I do have a request. I would like to move uh item Delta four uh to the top of the agenda uh before we do consent so that Mr. Dick can get back to his day job there, keeping us all healthy and safe.
Yeah, we gotta get him back.
And then uh just a quick reminder that we are going to have to take um a couple of things contemporaneously with the redevelopment agency here today. So
Okay.
With that, nothing else.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, Madam Clerk, then we are going to uh approval of the agenda. I have a motion from Councilman Reese.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Doer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's head on over to approval of the minutes. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, heading over to consent. Uh I bef- I know we're gonna get a presentation from Mr. Dick. With that, let's um pull items off consent and then let's approve the others in case we have anyone here waiting on some of these items. So at this time, I'm gonna send it back to you, Madam Clerk. Do you have any public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no public comment registered for our B consent agenda items, and we have not had anyone register.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna start with you, Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, I have none today.
All right. Councilman Reese. Councilwoman Taylor. Councilwoman Mart- Martinez.
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilwoman Breckus.
Who to approve?
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, heading on over. We're gonna jump to item D four. And welcome. It's so nice to see you, Mr. Dick. We haven't, we haven't seen you in a long time, so, which is probably a good thing.
It's absolutely.
When we're not working together, it's a good thing. But it's wonderful to see you and um excited for this presentation. I'm so glad that you did this. As we know, there was so much confusion for a very long time. And uh under your leadership, you made it happen. So great job. So we're excited to hear what uh the presentation looks like.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Shivi, and good morning. Good morning, council members. I'm Kevin Dick. I'm the District Health Officer for Northern Nevada Public Health. And uh apologize, it's taken me a little while to get here before you uh with scheduling conflicts that we had, but I very much appreciate being here today. And I'm here to report and update you on our name change from Washoe County Health District to Northern Nevada Public Health. Uh and this occurred on August thirty-first. Uh we had a kickoff ceremony. And I want to thank uh Councilmember Reese for uh attending and uh this is a picture of him with our other uh Board of Health uh members. Uh the slide's a little bit dated, so uh congratulations, uh Vice Mayor Doer. Um and I apologize for the for the uh that on the slide, but uh it was a one wonderful event. Um and I wanted to um give you a little background on the the reason behind the the name change. And that was that there was a concurrent meeting that was held between the uh city councils of Reno and Sparks and the Washoe County Commissioners back in twenty twenty-one. Uh and during that meeting, there was discussion about uh confusion that people had over uh who was in charge of the Health District. And we are a regional agency. We're established under NRS four thirty-nine and through an interlocal agreement between Reno Sparks and Washoe County. And uh through that agreement, we are um governed by a district board of health. And uh I'm gonna go uh show you the composition of the board and the membership as I move through uh my presentation. But the decision at that meeting was it would be useful to change the name of the Health District. So it was uh viewed uh more separately from Washoe County. We are at the Washoe County Complex under the interlocal agreement. We have a lot of support functions that are provided for us by Washoe County, but we are a separate governmental entity from Washoe County, and Northern Nevada Public Health uh helps us to convey that that message um as a different entity. Oops. So with our name change, um it's a new name, but it's the same mission for us. Uh we still are providing the same services, uh still serving the residents of Reno Sparks and and Washoe County. Um but we do have a uh more convenient, uh an easier URL. Uh we are now separate from going through the Washoe County website, and uh people can access our website by just going to nnph.org uh to be able to uh get information uh regarding the Health District there. And we are providing uh the same services that we have, uh which are a broad breadth of services. We have over fifty thousand uh birth and death records that we process per year. Uh we have uh air quality, environmental uh Uh we have uh air quality, environmental uh health permitting uh that we do. We provide uh immunizations. I think everybody um became very aware of that during COVID nineteen. Um but uh we are now focusing primarily on uh childhood vaccinations. And uh vaccinations for uninsured and underinsured individuals. Um we also do disease investigations for eighty reportable diseases. Uh we have sexual health and family planning programs and we uh through our uh air quality, environmental health. Uh permits do compliance inspections of restaurants, childcare facilities, public pools and spas. Hotels and motels, land development, mobile homes, R V parks, uh gas stations and and more. Uh so we talked about um during COVID nineteen, layers of protection. Uh things like uh people isolating at home, social distancing, masks. Uh finally, we got the the vaccine that provide another layer of protection. The Health District every day through through our programs are is providing layers of protection to protect the health of our community. And I think we all uh remember how chaotic it was uh when we had COVID nineteen running rampant through our community. If we weren't providing the services that we do to uh create a healthy conditions and suppress disease. Our everyday lives would be much different and would be um back to that chaos. And this is a picture, uh our pictures of our uh District Board of Health members. Uh we have. Uh one member that's appointed by uh each of the jurisdictions, uh that's one of their elected uh members. And then one other appointment from each of the jurisdictions and then those six members appoint uh physician to serve on the board. And so uh we have uh Christopher Dare, uh Councilman from Sparks, who's our chairman for the board. We have Councilman Reese, uh who's our vice chair and we have Mary Louise Garcia, Commissioner from Washoe County. And also as a appointed member from Washoe County. Uh then we have Doctor John Novak, who's a retired pediatric dentist, who's a Sparks appointee. We have uh Chief Mike Brown, retired fire chief, North Lake Tahoe Fire. Uh now with our and our partners, who's the uh City of Reno appointee. Uh we have Doctor John Clacking, uh who is the Washoe County appointee. He's a. Biochemist and founder of a couple of biotech companies. Uh and then the board appointed Doctor Rika Danko as our physician on the board, uh who certainly currently serves. Uh as the Chief Medical Officer at Saint Mary's. So um I think that uh the the rollout has gone. Uh fairly smoothly. Uh hopefully people are are understanding that uh uh our our new uh name and same mission. And uh I I just wanna express my thanks for uh our Board of Health. Uh it's really a very good, engaged uh and thoughtful group and it's uh my my privilege to be able to work under them. Thank you very much.
Fantastic presentation. Um I think you did a great job. It was wow, I look back and do you remember? We couldn't even get swabs. Do you remember that?
Yes.
It seems like forever ago, but it was very real. I thought you did a very good job with an incredibly tough landscape.
Well, thank you very much. We we just announced that we uh did do a documentary of uh our response, so. Uh there was kind of serendipity that happened. We had uh contracted with a video group. To do videos of each of our divisions so the public could understand what we do. Uh we got our air quality video done and then uh none of our divisions were doing what they do anymore. They were all doing COVID, so.
Oh yeah.
Uh we uh we redirected and used that uh uh to film uh some of the response and we just put that together and it's available on YouTube.
Yeah, that's cool. I didn't know that. I'm gonna definitely check it out.
Yeah, just to, if people just go to look for Northern Nevada Public Health, they'll find it there.
Good job. Um and also, I think during that time, it was so easy for people to be a Monday morning quarterback and. You know, it was very stressful. I thought you did a very, very good job.
Well, thank you very much and it was, I think, our our community stuck together very well. Um through that event and Reno and Sparks and Washoe County all working together.
Yeah, you did a great job, so thank you. Um any questions? Go ahead, Councilman Reese, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
The esteemed aboard.
Yeah, what a privilege and honor it is to serve on that board. Um it's really been eye-opening. I've been over there, I think, now. Through two strategic planning processes and initiatives. And I have the privilege of working in the environmental health services side of the house, for lack of a better word. Um but what I wanted to say were a couple of things. First, thank you to um you, Mister Dick, for the work that you've done. It is. Uh been uh absolutely awesome to see you uh work and to do what you do in this community has been really a godsend. Um I want to thank uh Mister Oxnard, who's also here with us today, um and he is. Uh really in charge of our, a lot of our public outreach and public facing media relations, all of those things. Um it is a challenging space that you have occupied, certainly in the most challenging time in our. Uh probably lived experience, quite frankly, and so um obviously the members of this body are thankful for the work that you did. Uh during the pandemic and and as we come out of the pandemic, really to change the nature of public health, right? It's, there's a lot more awareness of who you are, uh but the work still has to be getting, be getting done and and also I think. Given the way in which uh the funding for various public health initiatives has happened, I think people are coming to recognize that. Um sort of that ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure or maybe it's vice versa. Um you know, that the those phrases always trip me up, but but ultimately um. We we've got an incredible group of people who are working at the Health District. Uh Northern Nevada Public Health has a lot to be proud of and the work that they're doing each individually, even within the divisions, is really spectacular. We have leaders in their field, people who are um publishing and teaching and training others throughout the country to do the work that they do. And I think a lot of that has to do with your leadership, Mister Dick. Um I don't know if my colleagues are are paying as close attention to what Northern Nevada Public Health does, but Mister Dick will not be with us much longer. But this may be the last time that we get to see you with Northern Nevada Public Health presenting. And so I didn't want the opportunity to pass without recognizing you for your excellent commitment to this community. And I know that we're going through uh the process of of launching a search for a new director, which is um. Always, you know, a challenge, but it's something that each of us in this body have done in various capacities on the other bodies that we serve and on here. Uh Mister Dick, you've had a profound impact on this community and we are all indebted to the work and service that you have done. So appreciate you being here today and and for letting me just um give you the praise that you're so worthy and deserving of. So thank you so much, Kevin. Appreciate you very much.
All right, go ahead, Councilman Doer.
Yeah, I just want, I had no idea you were leaving. I'm very sorry to hear that.
I'm not right out the door.
Yeah, but six months, six months.
Yeah.
Okay, um well, I just wanted to comment on a few things that I particularly appreciated. One was during uh the pandemic. First of all, you made your staff staff available to the mayor, uh to our COVID task force. And in developing the COVID risk meter, you got that data up on the web. It's, you know, it was a very difficult time for all of us, but you did it. And uh you also worked to make your own data more understandable, more accessible, that you were trying to share with the community. And trying to like fix the train while the train is running, you know, at top speed. Um is, right, and on fire.
That's a good way of putting it.
Very challenging. I mean, very challenging to do process improvements while you're short-staffed, while everyone's doing a different job than they were hired for. And while um you know, we're we're renovating the part of the hospital to be an emergency response tent, et cetera. Um it was just quite remarkable. Um aside from COVID, I also wanted to make comment. That your staff have been incredibly supportive of our tree initiative here at the city. You understand, they understand that the trees can help improve our air quality. And I know we have some fairly dire statistics about our air quality. Um it may be turning better now, but. For decades, we did not meet water air quality standards for some forty years. I don't know where we are today exactly. But I know that um your how, your staff have come forth, they've been on videos, they've provided testimony, they have participated in. Um ordinance development. Many activities that you wouldn't normally say are part of a uh regulator's life, but they've done it. They also handed. Um uh handled years ago that entire transfer over to um not using wood stoves. Uh and even wood fireplaces unless of a certain size. But all of that has helped um with our air quality and then most recently, you know, making sure that we have good data for the air now. Uh when we have fires and we've been so impacted for years, luckily not this last summer as much, but. Uh your department, your organization does many, many things. And I do agree that many people don't know all of the things that you do. They can't. I mean, even at animal services, they don't, they have a very defined job. But even then, people are very confused about who does what, so kudos and thank you and I hope you have a good, successful. You know, after, after this job career or retirement.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, and thank you for recognizing the tremendous staff that we have at the Health District.
It's unbelievable, really, really is.
That's very true. Go ahead, uh Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um Mister Dick, I haven't had the pleasure of working with you very closely, but I just wanted to say very briefly. Um appreciate your partnership with your team on the B F A C and also Councilman Reese. We really appreciate that in the development community and on that um committee, so good luck and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? And one thing I would love for you to tell the public, let's talk a little bit about vaccinations. Where and when um right now, um and which ones you're doing.
So um it's important for people to get vaccinated for the uh the fall respiratory season that we're now in. Fall respiratory virus season. Um we are seeing um flu and R S V starting to tick up now. Um it's not as bad as it uh was the last couple of years, but we are seeing now increasing cases of flu and R S V. Um not so much with uh COVID cases right now. Uh they're down from where they were in August. Uh but the uh what we're encouraging people to do is to uh go to uh pharmacies locally that have. Uh the COVID flu and R S V vaccines available. Uh they're covered by insurance. Uh if people are uninsured, we have the flu and COVID vaccine that's uh available. Uh through the Health District Clinic. Um and so we're we're there as a safety net program. Uh for for folks that uh are, don't have insurance or are underinsured.
Okay.
Uh there are some providers that are also uh providing those vaccines, but uh readily available through the pharmacies.
That's great. And so can you just tell us where and when um your uh or world, your office provides that?
So we are over at the county complex and we um are uh building B over there. So uh it's easiest for people to access us if they're going north on Wells. Uh to continue past the Ninth Street uh light and then just take the first right after that. You'll be right in our parking lot. Uh and if you go on the front doors there, that's our immunization clinic. And uh we have the uh vaccines available there. Uh we encourage people to uh contact us. Uh ahead of time.
Yeah, so make an appointment.
Yeah, and I don't know if uh my trustee communications manager can give me a phone number for that. Uh before I step down, but uh it's it's good to make an appointment ahead of time. Uh but we try to accommodate people that are that are walk-ins, eight to four thirty.
From what time?
Eight to four thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have some evening hours um on some of the Wednes- Wednesdays during the month and so people should inquire about that if they're.
Okay, great. All right.
Met a mayor, I may, um I I will say it's challenging right now in the vaccination world because. A couple of things are at play and and Mister Dick has identified, of course, the opportunities for walk-in and and appointment-based times at our clinic there on Ninth. Um but the hard part is, is is two things are true. One is a lot of what this Health District did during the pandemic. Was they were everywhere all at once. They were doing mobile clinics, they were coming into homes. They were at school sites everywhere we could, you know, we were re- responding and so that health emergency. Uh took, of course, people and it took money, uh both of which are now uh the money has largely dried up from the federal government in terms of support. For some of those programs. Um there's also, quite frankly, there are uh vaccine issues, meaning the delivery of them. We are not necessarily receiving them. Sometimes there have been intermittent periods of time where you're just looking around at which clinic, which. Um pharmacy, which doctor's office has them. And so we we've just got a lot at play there and of course, people, right? We don't have the same all volunteer army or staff that we did have during the pandemic. Uh we now have people who have gone back to their other jobs within the Health District. And so um we've experienced a little bit of miss um uh missed opportunities because as public health changes. People come to expect what they knew in the prior two years and now that that delivery method and services are not the same, it's been challenging. I'll give you an example, Meta Mayor, someone had reached out to your office and mine.
Yeah.
About a homebound uh individual who is really challenging to get care for. Well, there are no homebound uh services now. And so we, um the Health District was kind enough to really work and lean in with particular. Then um Mister Dick, be credited, thankful, being to path. I I'm I. You've solved that. Have, but I want to make sure. They're just changing issues. And again, um this. Northern Nevada Public Health is funded from a variety of sources, some of them grant-based, others of them county-related. And so I just want to make sure that I shared with you the full picture and for my colleagues, it's not as easy to get the vaccine, whether they be flu or COVID. R S V, all those things as it would have been a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow, okay, well, very good.
Thanks.
Let me just ask one more thing, do you have to?
I'll just say we are within it. We will make sure that they.
Thank you so much. It really, that is really incredibly kind, because I know she. You know, just about, you know, trying to happen. That was so. Just one quick question. How old do you have to be of COVID, flu and R S V?
Thank you, I was. We are recommending uh COVID flu vaccines for people who's. Um and uh the uh R S V, uh I neglected to say that that's for people that are sixty and older.
Sixty and older.
Yeah, I'm getting old guy, so I didn't worry about that, but uh yeah, it's for the sixty and older.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Great to see you too.
You too, thank you.
All right, bye. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna send it right back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's time if we want to get back in order, we're looking at item D one, David one.
D one. All right. Here we go, one second. Okay, this is gonna be a staff report approval of grant of easement for water facilities and access road grant of temporary. Access and construction license to Truck Meadows Water Authority for water facility over city-owned, including. Zero eight four seven one two, located north of Avenue D Land, west of Mahogany Ridge Drive. Take it away.
Good afternoon, cheers.
Good morning. Would counsel intention or?
I don't think we will require one. Does anyone desire? No.
No, I think we're, okay, thank you so much. All right. Make a motion? Oh.
Miss Taylor.
Miss Taylor, give me a motion.
Second.
I have a motion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Right, heading on to D two. Madam Clerk, do you have any comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item D two. We received quite a few comments this morning. Additionally, we did receive written correspondence, one letter for six. Of opposition and one layer of concerned. And are part of the permanent record.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. So at this time, I am going to call up the staff. That's great, and I believe we have Garrett Gordon here for a presentation.
Madam Mayor, this is just a presentation, Gordon, on behalf of uh Jacobs Entertainment.
Okay, thank you so much. I just, I just want to clarify, Mister City Manager, these reviews um. Why?
We are.
Why don't we them? I'm I'm just curious, because other projects, I don't think we do that.
Yep, so there's a development agreement in place and we are statutorily required to um examine the development progress every two years. One of the cannes imposed by this council was that Mister Gordon come back in person uh for this first year. Um one year in, so I have a schedule. It's one of the conditions in that development agreement. Today to talk, as they've made.
Okay, and we don't make other developers do that, correct?
Well, we do make other developers do, because we don't um use development agreement tool very often. Were we to use that more often, they would be required statutorily to come in at least every two years and if the council desired a different condition, they would have to come in and and update. On progress.
But could we require Dex to do that?
Um it sort of depends on what the entitlement.
It sort of depends on what the entitlement looked like for the.
We did for that. Actually, I think it's a good, I, I like it.
I mean, not the Eddie House.
It's a great, I think it's a great thing because it keeps you accountable and you have to keep coming back. I was curious because I kind of, I didn't know, understand the process because usually we don't have projects coming back to updates, but I like it. I think it's good. So.
Can I ask a question about something our manager said?
Go ahead.
Okay. You said they are one year in and coming back a year early. But what I want to understand, I discussed this with Councilman Reese as well. When we approved the development agreement, that was a two years ago. I know it was signed and recorded ago, but what I want to know is when did the terms go into effect?
The terms were in effect when it was recorded. That's when it becomes effective. It is adopted by ordinance, you'll recall.
Yeah.
Because it is effectively a zoning change.
Like PUD.
Yep. And so statutorily, have two years. Not here early, they're here within the terms of the contract. So I'm a little bit, but this council put in place a more aggressive condition for that first review. As I said, you all said you want to see Mr. Gordon back, but you're from the approval date.
Okay, well, that was what I was unclear what the approval date was. So you're saying it's the day it was recorded, not the day we approved it at council?
I mean, it's sort of a legal question. It's interpretation that it is effective upon creation.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking, just to be clear, is there were some conditions. Just wondered. It was a five-year extension and I didn't know, did that go from when their credits were ending before, is what I understood. Approved it or when it was recorded. So if, you don't have to answer now, but I would like to get that answer because I think it was tended to when the sewer credits were extiring. Oh, you can, okay. All right.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. The floor is yours. Take it away.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gordon, before you start, I just, we are having some internet issues and I just don't want us not being on our recording. So before you start doing your thing, give us a second.
Okay, hold on. We'll just take a little minute.
No problem.
I know, something is happening with my computers. It's all of us? Okay. All right. Today's been kind of a weird day, a little wonky. Really? Okay. What was?
So. Fire drill.
The fire drill.
So, Madam Mayor, the technique, the nature of the technical difficulty in some is essentially that this room, this building does not presently have consistent access to the internet. So we're going to take a break for our, our IT folks to work that out.
So can we do like a fifteen minute and then check back?
Yep, let's do that.
Okay, so we'll reconvene at, we'll say fifty, eleven fifty.
No, that doesn't work, Hillary.
Oh, general pack of the word.
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, yes, we are going to reconvene this meeting. And one of the reasons I, I want to do this now, first of all, obviously, we're having technical difficulties. I could let everyone know that we are upgrading our whole entire system during our break because we know we've had issues with it. It goes in and out, in and out, and it's quite honestly rather than making the way identified that we really needed to bring us this meeting so that we don't continue to have new problems. So unfortunately, here we are, we're going to be recording it through this option. But I do want everyone to know during break that we will be upgrading that entire system. So that is really good. I also do not want to reschedule this because we're getting into the holiday season and some council members will not be here for the next upcoming council meeting. So this is why I am saying what's, I don't want to postpone the rest of the meeting. I want it to continue to move forward so that the council members can be here during this. So we will make do. Everyone will just be a location part of your job, right? Because and we'll make sure that we get these comments all of the record. So with that being said, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Garrett Gordon. Take it away.
So I wait for that. It's just, it's not working.
But here's working recorder on. We're good to go. All right. Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor, congrats on the appointment. For the record, Garrett Gordon, today representing Jacob's Entertainment. As you can see on your screen, see up on the screen, today is the requirement in the development agreement to do a one-year review to this body. As Mr. Thornley indicated before we took a hiatus, we're required to be here under the terms of the development agreement. The development agreement became effective and the council member due E defines the effective date. And the effective date is the date this agreement is recorded within Washoe County Recorder's Office. So this agreement was recorded November twenty first, twenty twenty one. And we agreed in the development agreement to come before this body within one year to provide a report, to provide a review for compliance with the agreement. Pursuant to state law, there's actually a two-year requirement. So we're here a year early to give you an update. Let me walk through a few of these sections in the agreement and provide updates and then certainly be available for questions afterward. So, streetlights. Development agreement contemplated and allowed for a new streetlight standard to create the district up and down Fourth Street between Keystone and West Street. The update on that, on the streetlights are the following. We've been working with your City of Reno staff as well as coordinating with RTC. Why are we coordinating with RTC? RTC and their capital improvement plans are moving forward with Forest Street improvements starting next year and a few years after. So there's no reason to install streetlights, only to tear them out to improve gutters, curbs, sidewalks, et cetera. So we're coordinating these efforts. So it's all done at once. And it's my understanding that will get kicked off at some point next year. And we're very excited about having these lights run up and down Fourth Street, starting hopefully next year. Pedestrian amenity and sewer connection fees. So, number one, the master developer has already paid, and this number is in the development agreement, two million, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Not an incentive, not a subsidy, that's real cash paid by Jacob's Entertainment for art installations, concrete pedestals, landscaping and fencing. You can see there, the polar bear is one example of those art installations. Given Mr. Jacobs prepaid and Jacob's Entertainment prepaid, they, they million dollars. Around has been the apartments, I'll talk about the resort, about remaining of about point nine, seven, one point nine doll credit. Again, that's was our, for these improved these, the incentive to credits. Those again, when given and sewer connection outlets were put in, were paid for. In dollars. So far, about four hundred and sixty-eight as of year. The year, so it was about I think it was even either at the first or second public hearing, but it was important to this city council that there were charging stations built in, constructed in conjunction aid station, parking spaces. I can assure you both.
Well, there's a three hundred million dollar rebranding and renovation of the J Resort. It's not your old sand resort. And you can see from the exterior, it's been repainted. A lot of great comments from Wolfpack family. Gray and blue Wolfpack colors. Indoor, you could see if you've been in there, beautiful finishes. Really a nice, I think, best property downtown Reno at this point, including some additional food options. You have a steakhouse, the J Halls, you have Hamless, Grasada as well, a breakfast dinner restaurant, we're getting more amenities for downtown Reno. And then at night, you can see the lights, the artwork, really creating that entertainment and arts district that was envisioned when it came before you last time. Also, the Globe Plaza, so the twenty million dollar expansion of the Globe Plaza is complete. That was before you last time, there was a little plaza on Fourth Street, trying to get the momentum going on West Fourth Street. Since then, it's probably approved the use permit for the festival grounds. So now we have a large, big, beautiful festival ground. You can see the shade structures, you can see the turf, you can see the the, the light posts and the artwork and the stage. And that expansion has been a tremendous success. We had at last, this period summer, a series of concerts, a series of events. You can see over the right-hand corner, the Reno Romeo Foundation actually hosted downtown Reno. I would have said four or five years ago that you'd have the Reno Romeo Foundation sitting outside on West Fourth Street, holding under them, under the stars, one of their largest events of, of the year. Also, you could see some burning down events on the left-hand side and just a lot of great fun events, five of the events that happened over the last year, which was the vision for this area. And I pulled an Instagram post I thought was absolutely perfect. Sure, where we are, where we, what we envisioned, where we are and where we're headed. Said, I had an amazing night at the Reno Night Park. It was at the Globe Plaza. The atmosphere was filled with art, love, and so much fun. From delicious food to incredible performers, this event had it all. The vibrant lights added an extra touch of magic to the night. It was a playground for my lens. Can't wait for the next one. So we can't wait either. I think that captures exactly what the Jacobs organization plan, fun, art, food, and just community right in downtown Reno. Then we were blessed with the actual Reno Philharmonic came to the Globe Plaza. As you all know, they've been around this community for decades. They've been at Wingfield Park. They came to West Fourth Street. Again, three, four, five years ago, anyone could have envisioned the Reno Philharmonic hosting one of their largest events on West Fourth Street. It was very successful. You could see a ton of people there. Folks had a lot of fun. And we're now planning for the twenty twenty fours concert series, which will have some great names and again, some great art, food and community bundled together. And again, I always like to bring this up because where does this stem from? Where does this idea of having an entertainment district with art, with games field, with redevelopment, where did that come from? Did people have been there or is there a policy document that we can focus on? Well, the Downtown Action Plan, that was approved in April of twenty twenty seven by the Progressive Urban Management Associates. The three members on this body were on the body then it was approved unanimously. And the top master plan policies were build tourism assets to market Reno for outdoor recreation, outdoor events, the Globe Plaza. Prioritize infill and redevelopment in the downtown area where it can be readily served by transit and advances other master plan goals such as connectivity, walk rule centers and housing diversity. Promote and continue revitalization of the downtown economy. If you remember in two thousand seventeen, it wasn't just the experts, the urban admin associates who came up with these, but there was a vast number of workshops in our community, a ton of public comment, a number of town halls who said infill revitalizing downtown was the number one goal. And we think after a year, we're doing a really good job at it. And this is a twenty-year agreement. In the next nineteen years, we think it's going to get even better. And I continue to put this in my presentations because I think there continues to be a little bit of a false narrative of what's going on here. For the record, there has been zero taxpayer money spent on the development of Reno's DNA line of this room. Zero. Absolutely zero. I think that's important to make that record clear, the narrative out there. It has not been this. And again, I know, hopefully every time I come here, I'm happy to put this back up on the street, but hopefully at some point there's buy-in that again, this is, this is a fact. So it was also fun going back to my presentation the last time, I had a very similar screen and I showed you phase one was acquisition, reconstruction and planning. And I had a slide up for phase two, and that was from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty six. And some of these elements were in on that slide and it's nice to check the box that we've completed what we promised we would do. Phase two, we promised would be expand the Globe Plaza into the festival grounds. Check. We absolutely did that. Has had, had a great concert series with the Philharmonic, the George Clinton Band, the Romeo Foundation. It's fantastic. Two, expanding Reno's DNA line artwork. Two, expanding Reno's neon line artwork and commitment that we expanded past the Globe Plaza. And that's now been expanded, both at the S P's, with the Sprouts, neon lights, all the way down to Keystone. I also promised that we would groundbreak, I promised, I committed that we would groundbreak the residential over on Zero Second Street. We've done that. Again, we came up with between now and then ten percent senior affordable. And I also mentioned the plan was the of phase two was to rebrand and renovate San's Regency. I think over four hundred million doll, three hundred million dollars into the J Resort, certainly check that box. And sometimes it gets lost here, but when you're putting all this money into these properties, you're expanding the footprint, you're adding restaurants. What does that do? That also adds jobs. And I'm happy to stand here and say that over four hundred full and part time jobs have been added in and around the J Resort since we started, which is huge for this community. Where are we headed in the next two years? Well, there will be an additional expansion of the J Resort, a hundred million dollar expansion, restaurants, spa, and more. As mentioned in the in the in the press the other day, we're excited. We've had our eye on the Bonanza property for the last few years. As many of you know, it's been a probate court for I think over two years now. We always thought it'd be a great location for workforce housing. So we're going to show up at the auction later this month and hopefully make a bid that's accepted and work through a workforce housing project on that property. We continue to work with residential developers, hopefully groundbreaking the Chevron block in the next few years. And then finally, we plan to in the next sixty, ninety days unleash or release our ten year master plan. We have planners, we have architects, we have community input, and we've really been working on the master plan that we intend at the first of the year to share that of how we plan to move forward. And I also, I hinted on this a minute ago, I think not only is it important to emphasize the jobs that have been created, the paychecks that Jacobs Entertainment and did writing, the four hundred employees, but the construction jobs. And you have people spending money building things. Who has to build those things? It's our local contractors. It's our local subcontractors. And I thought you could hear it right from our general contractor. They always read this. On the behalf of Lepery Construction and the over one thousand men and women. Again, one thousand men and women in our community who have worked on the apartments, the J Resort, the Globe Plaza over the last year, they all want to sincerely thank Jacobs Organization for investment in downtown Reno. Despite record high inflation and interest rates, which have stalled or delayed many projects throughout Reno. If you all know, some projects have stopped given the economic and financial condition, not only in Reno, but across the country. Jacobs has continued to invest in our community and our construction workers, which has been critical of the local economy. Frank also wanted to say, we want, we'll also like to thank the Reno City Council for their continued leadership and support of Reno's construction workers and development of Reno's neon line district. We look forward for the work of Jacobs Organization on a future basis, including the upcoming hundred million dollar worth expansion. So again, you hear these big numbers in the paper, a hundred million dollars, three hundred million dollars. What are those numbers? Yes, it's buying some materials, but it's also Jacobs providing paychecks to members of our community for for the construction jobs. So it's been a phenomenal effort. We can't thank Frank and his company, all the subcontractors, the enormous work they've done for the project. Scott, but. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And here's a little rendering. We saw the paper of the worth the worth expansion, the current unbelievably, you know, exciting art wall has also been installed. You can see that up on that forest tree, but to add to that art, entertainment district. So thank you for the ability to write a report. We're happy to come back in this first year and I'm happy to answer your questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon. I'm on Zoom here. So I'm just going to speak loudly. So just for those listening on Zoom, we have several phones that are recording for the Zoom and the Zoom, of course, is recorded. So that's a great addition. So at this point, I think we should switch the Zoom view to the, do the cameras work in the room? Okay. And let's open it for any comments or questions from the council, anyone. Ms. Breckus.
Yeah. And thank you. I am going to do a my comments and questions are for the record. So that is a legal standard that everything can go verbatim. And I'm recording it now, so that'll happen. My questions and comments are for Mr. Gordon. They're for our staff.
Okay.
Who is our staff person involved?
Well, I think we'll start with our Mr. Manager, but let me ask, since Mr. Gordon's up, if there are any comments or questions for Mr. Gordon, Ms. Taylor.
That's not working. Thank you, Mr. Mrs. Vice Mayor. I had a question, Garrett. Thank you for being here about the ten year master plan. Because a lot of the questions that I see coming through are those in that there was no plan. What is the plan? And that caught my attention when you said you might bring something like that forward in the next sixty to ninety days. I can't remember exactly how many days. If you could just expand on that a little bit and tell us what we might be able to expect. I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, House Member Taylor. So for the record here, Gordon. So it's a twenty year agreement and we've been through one year, had all the kinds of ideas and concepts of what this district would look like. And for the last, you know, six months, we worked hard on the ten year plan, which includes housing ideas, containment ideas, expanding beyond the J Resort and Globe Plaza, the other properties, what those would look like. And so, yeah, we're excited to come back first of next year and lay some of that out and get some feedback and make some pretty big announcements, folks.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Reese or Mr. Martinez?
I'm happy to ask some questions, Mr. Gordon. Thank you for being here today. I don't know if you were here earlier, and so I wanted to share with you a couple of things. Number one, I thought the presentation was very thoughtful. I think there's a lot going on there in the presentation, and I wouldn't want to over or miss any parts of it. So I just sort of would start with my first question. And that is, we had a number of folks here in the audience this morning who expressed some frustration with what they observed to be a whole, we'll call it an area of town that has changed in their experience, right? So there were some naturally occurring housing units, I think is what they're referred to in the industry that were the sort of the place of last resort for people, and those are gone. So what they now see are vacant lots as you undertake this ten year plan. I need us to try to figure out how do we bridge the two extremes? Like on one side, there's a lot of very positive things here about the transformation of this area of town. And I'm very excited. I think everything that Jacobs Entertainment has said they intended to do, you've shown that they are doing. On the other hand, we have people who are struggling and do not feel included in the economy that is going on around us. How do we navigate those two extremes as it relates to a project that we all want to be very happy and excited for, right? We see a transformative potential for an area of downtown that was very neglected for many years. So I'm just trying to gauge your appreciation and understanding for those extremes. Like, how do we move forward together as a group? Because I don't want people to feel left out of what is the opportunity here for our community.
Keep up my presentation. So thank you, Councilman Reese. So I was here earlier and I did hear some of the comments, you know, that that was said. So just a little historical background, right? There were saturations of older hotels in this area. Why? Why is that? Because decades ago, decades ago, we were the divorce capital of the world. Folks would come here, get their six week presidency, get divorced, and go throw their ring off the bridge into the river. Since then, none of the owners or the successive owners, but they've dined into these properties. You can see some of these pictures that I'm showing you, where we were there, families of not only one or two, but families of five, six, seven, sleeping on the floor with cockroaches and moths and black mole, if it was for rhythm. And so I've said this before, and I'll I'll say it again. Jacobs Entertainment came into these properties. Number one, everyone stopped paying rent from day one because he did not feel like he could collect a rent check from anyone living in those conditions. Number two, security was put on site the same day that we closed, which we got a lot of feedback. If any of you were at the Renova Flats groundbreaking, we had testimonials saying I, 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 my children and myself as a single mom were scared for our life coming home every day. And the day Jacobs put security in there, it gave them a beating. After those two things, the third thing happened was, and I'll stand here today, and I've said it before, not one vulnerable person, a veteran, a senior, a child, living in any of those units were not relocated on Jacobs dime. Some were flown to Canada or other locations because they asked to be close to the family. Some were, we bridged the gap to put them in the townhouse. Some were moved into a lot better living conditions than in the apartments. So I'll stand here today and say and defend the Jacobs Organization that, to my knowledge, every single vulnerable person who needed better living than what you're seeing here on the screen was was relocated. Here's one example that it was the number one calls for service in downtown Reno, given given these conditions. So given that history, given the relocations that occurred, and given the fresh start that not only these people were given, but that this area was given, demolitions happened for a good reason. Now, where do we go from here? So we heard loud and clear about the affordable housing component. We first thought, and even in the development agreement, this council agreed you should put sixty three condo units on Second Street. Think we revisited that and said, your point, we heard from the community, we held a community meeting. We think apartments are more appropriate than than condos. And given market conditions and the and the cost of labor, I mean, probably had to sell condos for a million dollars apiece. That didn't make any sense whatsoever. So we retracted that and converted it into apartments. Ten percent senior affordable, right? That's what we put on there and for Jacobs commit as we move forward with housing, we'd like to try to keep that same mix. We've had our eye on Councilman Reese's Bonanza for years. And we think that will be a workforce slash affordable project in in the district. And I'll also say here, your your questions and your note and your comments don't go without notice with our ten year master plan. I think you're going to be pretty excited to hear about some relationships we've built around the community who deal in this area, as well as some of the buildings that we've been working on. Housing is on the top of the list for this master plan, and I'll be excited the first of next year to come present. But the folks who are here from today are absolutely part of our community and want to be there as a good as a good community partner for them.
Okay. All right.
I believe you.
You were asking if there's anyone having any questions with Mr. Gordon. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor. Ms. Gordon, thank you for being here and providing that presentation. It definitely gave us some answers to questions that we've been getting, not just from our community members, but that we may have ourselves, right? For your commitment to provide affordable housing in our region. And so I just want to echo some of those comments that were made earlier and by my colleagues up here on the thighs and making sure that you and Mr. Jacobs do whatever you can to provide more workforce and affordable attainable housing in our area. Know it's of key interest to a lot of our community members. As you are well aware, we had that workshop a few weeks back as well, where we discussed some of those options. And so looking forward to what the ten year master plan is going to come of and what is included in there. So I don't know, I don't want you to like give everything away, but just curious if you can give us any more information on what we should expect in that plan.
Thank you, Councilman. I really appreciate it. And I know that you weren't on this body when we did this exercise before. So it was kind of fun to give it to you and give you, you know, hear your fresh perspective on on the development. Yeah, the ten year master plan, as I mentioned, is going to include, you know, expansion of Arts Entertainment District. Certainly include the housing component, certainly include some affordable workforce housing pieces as well. And really kind of layout, you know, where we're headed. The next ten years, which you think about is only half the time this development, right? There was a vision. It's a large blank canvas that we are working through. You get it right. But it takes some time to make sure you do get it right. So I'm excited to walk through that. But as always, if we don't get it exactly right, we're always waiting for input from you, your constituents, this body, to make sure it is community ever.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you so much for the presentation. I was wondering, you announced that construction's underway on the apartments. And so are you anticipating ten percent would be six affordable units?
Correct. Yeah, ten percent of the sixty would be six.
Okay. Well, I'll I'll just make the ask right now. Maybe think about expanding that to even ten. Just something for Mr. Jacobs or whoever's organizing that construction project. The more we can have, the better. I'm not saying fifty, but we do have, you know, it's a it's a goal. So when do you think the apartments will be done?
They will be done next year.
Next year.
And just just so that the record's clear is by continuing to build those apartments in the market that we're in, he's going to have a set seven or eight figure loss on that deal. But he's committed to finishing that, that he committed to this council and the community to build those units. So it's not as if that project is, you know, somehow this viable, you know, revenue driven project. It's a piece of the larger puzzle, but it is is a loss to keep that commitment, given, as you know, economic conditions are tough to build apartments right now.
Well, that's why I was asking, because I know that workers are in short supply. Money is expensive, although I guess there was good news yesterday, I think it was from the Fed. But, you know, things are looking up a little bit, but I just was wondering what your schedule was.
We would like to have a heads in there by the end of next year.
Next year. Okay. That's great.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving along. And how about Councilman Breckus? You want to ask staff questions, I guess. Ever thoroughly, are you okay with that?
Yes, this is a course agenda as a presentation. By the developer, but I would do my best to answer your questions.
Three minutes. Who is the staff member?
Right now, it's me.
So the set aside on the workforce housing and then the condition they come in one year. Is that embedded in the development agreement or was that a condition to an approval? Because he showed up a clerk's letter.
The requirement that they show up within a year to review the progress on the on the broader project is embedded in the agreement. It is a contractual term there. And I would have to go through the agreement more carefully to tell you whether or not the affordable aspect of it is included. I don't believe it is. I think that that's a that's a commitment made by the developer.
Promise.
A promise.
And then the second one is, so under the statute, they're supposed to come in two years. Will they come back next year also then? Because that's the statute obligation.
Statute requires a review. It does not require necessarily an in person presentation and agenda item. And so the form that that typically takes is a prepared statement that goes through compliance and and progress on.
Okay. Typically, I mean, we only have one experience with one other. I have a question because the exhibits were not attached when the council did the approval. That was part of my objections to the agreement at the time. But with respect to the pedestrian amenities that I believe is appendix E, it looks like, and he showed a slide for that, that they put two point three million dollars in pedestrian amenities. But the bulk of those go back to the years of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. For example, installs of Longview, the Polar Bear, that was a six point eight million dollar oh, sixty eight hun- hundred dollar applicable or project that occurred in twenty twenty. So how come he's getting credits for things that occurred before the packaging of the development agreement? I don't understand that.
That's the structure of the agreement, right? So they made those investments and they wanted to preserve them. These they were made outside the context of being appended to a particular business license, or I'm sorry, a building permit the way they ordinarily would be required. And so to make sure that they got credit for it, they were memorialized and identified and valued out in that exhibit as appended to the agreement.
Well, I mean, if if the code says one thing and it says it's subject to the development, to the code, you know, because the reference in the exhibit says it's subject to the R M C code. And the R M C code does not say you can front load these things. So I have a, I have a strenuous objection to how that's being administered. That all this work that they were doing, twenty two thousand and eighteen, one point seven million in nineteen, and three hundred twenty nine thousand in twenty are backed up as credits to them.
If I might, the rationale for for crediting back those types of investments is that you end up with a more comprehensive and a more significant investments in those pedestrian amenities rather than piecemealing them against the value of smaller.
I disagree because in a way, those aren't even attached to anything. They're sitting out there. I disagree, because in a way, those aren't even attached to anything. They're sitting out there. Behind or in front of some vacant land. So that's an objection I have right there.
Okay, I'm going to stop you.
Oh, okay. Well, can I have a more, a little more time? I think earlier, both you and, I'm not going to have any more time.
We're going to move, everyone's going to get their chance to ask.
Okay. Okay.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Breckis.
All right, go ahead, Councilwoman, our Vice Mayor Dewar, go ahead.
Um, I don't, I don't have any questions right now. Well, there is one. I, I don't know if we can answer it today, but my question had to do with. Uh, Mr. Gordon said the start of the agreement was when it was recorded. And my understanding was we were giving a five-year extension to the credit that, uh, the sewer, um. The termination of the sewer credits that were normally to take place. Um, if, if it didn't begin until a year and a half later, there would have been a gap. So I just, I, I would like to get that clarified maybe later, just so everybody knows. Not trying to say it's one way or another in my arguing, I just want to know.
Make sure that we detail out.
Yes.
The specifics of those credits and how they exist.
Yeah, because I don't want it to be confusing later. It's better to do now.
Not only that, City Manager, for the record, am I correct? He owns those credits.
Uh, he.
Those are his.
To, to the extent that anyone can own a sewer credit, yes.
Yeah, those are his credits, because people tend to think, oh, those are city credits, but they are actually his credits. So I just want people to understand that, because I think there's always like this confusion. And when you say subsidy and all these things, which he hasn't received, you know, there, there has been a lot of spin.
They memorialize connection fees paid.
And, and that was even in the RGJ, um, pointing out. That those subsidies were not a thing, those credits were not a thing. So I just want to make sure, because I want that stuff on the record. I think that that's really important. Uh, okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for City Manager? I'm going to ask everyone, then I'll come to you, Councilwoman Breckis, hold on. Anyone else? Okay, anyone else for Garrett Gordon? Okay, all right, Councilwoman Breckis, go ahead. Yeah, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of make a comment first on that narrative in his slide that says there weren't any, uh, city money given to him. To Jacobs, but there were tremendous special privileges and rights that are not granted to others. And usually in public policy, Madam, I have before.
You, yes, you go right ahead, Councilwoman Breckis.
Um, and, and usually in public policy, urban development. If you're going to grant special privileges and rights, buying a city parking lot, without going through bid. Extension of sewer credits, some of these other things like the, um, pedestrian amenities. You're going to get something in return, not a promise for something. And that's where we seem to have found ourselves and landed this council. Um, and I didn't support it, I don't support it now, but I want to get into a little bit more to meet at the details. Because a lot of the details were not hashed out when we had the approval. Now, and I think the tracking at this point, one-year post is very inadequate, and I'm just going to make an objection on that. So residential construction tax, this is page nine to twenty-one on the agreement. The city and master developer agree that the RCT is collected for the construction project should be suspended. For the establishment or expansion of neighborhood parks, improvements, and facilities within the district. Within the first five years following the date of this development agreement. The developer may propose expenditures and improvements for residential construction tax to be located on property. To be provided by the developer or alternative property owner. I think a running tally of every residential construction tax collected upstairs in our permit office. Should show whether or not the developer exercised their right in these first five years of wanting to. Build a park on their own property, and then if it does, how that's going to be a park? Because last time I checked, parks are open to all. So, Mr. Manager, for help of understanding this one-year anniversary. How much residential construction tax has been collected upstairs? Because he did speak about some residents that are un- under construction, and then has he asked to put any of those on his private property?
I can tell you categorically they don't ask to put any sort of residential construction tax investment onto, um, private property. Or if the agreement says property provided to the city for the purposes of establishing a park. I don't know off the top of my head how much RCT has been collected to date. The first that comes in with the permit and is usually done, as it says here and in the statute. On a per-unit basis, and it's a thousand dollars a door or one percent of the value of the unit, whichever is less.
Okay, and then on the sewer fees, I have a, I have another question. He's spoken about, they want to acquire the Bonanza maybe, you know. At, at a bid auction. They did acquire the Desert Rose, I believe. Now, if those are, um, demolished, do those get a load into the sewer credits?
Um, I would have to go and look at the specific nature of the provisions related to the sewer credits. As we know, the sewer credits reflects connection fees already paid, and when they are credited back against building permits on a dollar-for-dollar basis. And so I would have to go and sort of pour over the document to tell you how properties, um, against which this agreement is not presently reported. Would be impacted by this. I suspect if there's not a provision that talks about the automatic add of. Properties acquired by the Jacobs organization, um, in this agreement, there would have to be an amendment.
Okay, so there's not a role in likely, this, your, off the top, thinking. Okay, all right, um, your time is thirty-two seconds over, so I'm going to hand, hand it over to Councilman Reese. Go ahead, Councilman Reese, ask your question.
Thank you so much. Mine is really more a comment, because I want the community to understand my thoughts. About what's going on in this part of West Reno. I think many of the comments raised by the council member from Ward One are suggestive of a willful disregard for reality. Uh, we as a city, uh, of course sit as a redevelopment agency. Uh, we are a body tasked with figuring out the direction of this city in the coming years. And we now have a developer who has come to the city over the course of the last eight or nine years. Has acquired an enormous amount of property. That property was not acquired through any assistance of the city of Reno. We did not participate in any of the land sale transactions. Those were transactions between arms-length sellers, meaning a motel owner. Desire to sell and another person desired to buy a piece of property. The city of Reno has no role in that. We don't have a legal obligation. We don't have any way that we could legally be involved. But now here we are. I don't want us to continue to relitigate the past. What was there is not there anymore. My interest is really in what will go and be there in the future. And again, we're talking about an area of Reno that had a tremendous amount of blight. A tremendous amount of issues that we, you know, inherited. And this council has the obligation, I think, to engage thoughtfully and proactively in how that area will be developed. Um, certainly. So much fun with the technology today. Um, certainly, I think we all have to remain engaged. Over the next ten years, or it could be twenty years, I suppose. I look at areas of this community that are equal in size and have taken that long, right? I don't know if it's, if we want to reference the Park Lane site, which sat vacant for twenty years of my adult life. And, and now it is a place where there's lots of activity and, and lots of thriving development and business. I also think, um, this area will take some time. I don't think any of it's going to happen overnight. I think the investments that Jacobs Entertainment has made into this part of West Reno are historic. I, I would say that most people, when they see historic investment in their community, are much more inclined to. I don't know if it's like, see the vision or be part of it, but part of that is that we are not yet fully aware of what the master plan for this area will be. So I sort of reserve judgment. I think we all should be, um, you know, rooting for and be skeptical of. You know, promises that are not made and promises that don't get kept. I, I think everything so far suggests to me that those things have been done. And again, I, the, the narrative that we have somehow given away special privileges is not true. We, when people come and ask us for redevelopment, we have tools in the toolbox that we're able to contribute to that redevelopment. But it is not always the things that, um, for example, incentivizes the state to do. Um, I think that again, uh, you know, disregarding reality is not really where this body wants to be. And so ultimately, I'm, uh, rooting for the long-term success of this community. I was thrilled to see the representations made in the presentation about the number of employees that are being employed in these properties and projects. The number of construction workers who are employed. Those are real people who are putting food on their family's table by being able to engage in the development of this part of town. And I think those people are deserving of, uh, you know, our thanks for their investment as well.
I'm going to cut you off. Thank you, Councilon. Um, that was twenty-five seconds over, just cutting you off there.
Okay.
Um, to be fair to everyone else, because sometimes I get pointed out that I'm not being fair. And I am trying to make sure that everyone has, um, the same amount of time on the record. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Vice Mayor?
No, I, I mean, I've asked my question.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure.
I, I will say one thing.
There's sounds like you have questions.
Do, do we? Oh, I have sound, but no one else?
Why did you sound? How did you get sound? Should we all come over there?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I'm having a party over here. It's not on, it just works. Um, that's another matter.
So here's what I'll do. We'll do one, one-minute wrap-up. Um, usually we vote and then do a minute, but, um, I don't think there's any, uh, action on this item. So I, let's just do a one-minute, and I'll, and everyone knows that's your time. Please keep it to the minute and, uh, we'll move on. So, um, Councilwoman Breckis, go ahead. Yeah, I mean, I'll just, because I was referred to by, um, my colleagues, the left, is. You know, how we have a redevelopment agency. If we had a re-used redevelopment agency. Hours, this would be a completely different thing with a lot more quid pro quo going up into the public policy and jobs and jobs. And, um, and, uh, um, uh, construction wages. So I think it evokes a, a misunderstanding of redevelopment agency rules. This was a straight city development agreement rule. And, um, I just see a continuation of this council not focusing on. The very minimal standards that are even there. Demand of the manager to give you a running tally. Of the residential construction tax, that subsection of the sewer credits, those subsections. Um, but most problematic to me is allowing, there was never any discussion. To allow that investment in eighteen, nineteen, and twenty to be backed in for these pedestrian amenities. That is a retroactive application. I don't even think, I think it's against the statute.
Thanks so much.
Councilman Martinez.
No, sorry, Madam Mayor, thank you so much.
Go ahead, Ca- uh, Councilwoman Taylor, take your way.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm in a very unique position in that, um, I get to start seeing the benefits of Jacobs. And what he's done downtown, and I'm pretty sure I'm the only one that actually lives down there. So I am absolutely very grateful to what I see happening. I see the buildings coming up. I see the investments starting, and I'm not privy to what happened before with the senior members. But I am super excited about what is coming online. And I'm excited to be part of downtown and living downtown and seeing these things. So thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Go ahead, any, any, um, comments, last-minute comments, Councilman Reese? No, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think this was a great presentation opportunity. I'm sorry for the technical difficulties. About a week ago, I had requested that, um, and you may not have got the message, that. Your report, so we have the PowerPoint that you shared. But I was really thinking it would be good to document the record with a written report on whatever you have. I mean, it's just a different format, but it would be available. And especially given our technical difficulties, it might be actually useful. So if you have, uh, a little bit of time, I think it'd be good to, whatever form you're planning to use going forward, written report. It would be good to memorialize this report the similar way. That'd be my, a suggestion, it's not a requirement. I think it would be helpful, given, especially given our technical difficulties today. And I've already asked to get just, um, an assessment of. Did the previous sewer credits end? Did the new ones begin, or did they run together, or how that worked, whatever legal assessment? I think it'd be good to document, so that five or ten years from now, we're not having a conversation about what once was or what might be. And I just really appreciate the progress that's being, I do, it's, it's really good to see, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I, I'll just say, I, I do want to push back on this special treatment and. You know, sort of the sensationalized, um, rhetoric that goes along around this whole thing, especially on the Ward One side. And it sounds very convincing, um, and usually it does. So we can sort of play into that. I want to remind everyone whether it was the parking lot. Or other stipulations that were coming before this council, they came before this council. That means it was noticed. It was transparent. And just so anyone knows out in the public, you can come to the, to the city of Reno with any proposals. Oftentimes, we have great proposals from, uh, our community. Uh, you bring, you bring forth all the time, and we do the, a lot of those on the river, do we not? We work really well with our community. You can come forward and work with the city of Reno and say, hey, I'd like to go do this. I'd like to maybe develop this. I would like to work on this product. Anyone has the ability to do that. We have an open door. I have always said that, from the minute we brought back the NABS. When I first was elected, the NABS, they had taken the NABS away, and I said, no, our community is going to shape this community, and that's what we do. Um, but the rhetoric, it's not, it's popular, and it's very anti-Jacobs, and that's all great. Do I love everything that every developer does? No, but let me ask you this. Where was the outcry? From the public whenever all those people were being taken advantage of? Children being sex trafficked, drugs being pushed onto people, thirty-year-old bedding with massive bedbugs. I couldn't even take a reporter in there, and she knows who she is, and she didn't report on that, because there were so many bedbugs in there for thirty years. It was horrific conditions, horrific. And I know, because I kept looking for my brother in those, in those conditions, living like that. I know firsthand what those look like, so it was not okay to let people live in those kinds of conditions. I am sorry, it was disgusting. And so where is the outcry for the people that took advantage of those people? That charged three-hundred dollars a week. They charged three-hundred dollars a week for two-hundred square feet, not no running water, thirty-year-old bedding. Was that okay? Where was the outcry for that? Do the math. That's twelve-hundred dollars a month. That's not affordable housing. So everyone in here that wants to say that. Can you imagine the children that had to live in there like that? Where is the outcry for people that own those properties? So you can say what you want, but all of us have to work together, and we should be protecting. What about all the other properties out there that still today should get cleaned up? I can think of the one, what, what, what's the one across the street from Sienna? Horrific. So I, I just, it makes me crazy when people say, oh, it was okay to let people live like that. I'm sorry, it wasn't. Anyway, all right, we're moving on. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'm really sorry that all these comments, I hope that we can upload all of these, Mr. City Manager. Um, this is really unfortunate, we had technical difficulties, so I really hope it's there. Anyway, okay, moving on, Councilwoman, or, uh, I'm going to send it to, uh, Madam Clark, go ahead.
Uh, Madam Mayor, we're going to the bond item C three, which is approval of an interlocal agreement with Suckin Meadows Water.
By the way, Iris, you're sitting here. What item are you here for? Okay, I'm so sorry. I want to make sure that we take a, um, inventory of. Where, because I don't want, when people want to sit here, or not want to sit, I don't want people to sit here for hours, so I apologize. So we, we're going to do a better job of that when we come back for break, I promise. Okay, go ahead, take it away.
Good afternoon, Nathan Molya Parks Recreation Area, this is.
There's a tape recorder.
This is not for the record.
Okay. From my own memory record, uh, we're here today just to approve the agreement for the third port of the blue that we installed. In Link Plaza, right outside, um, I believe there's a map in, in your packet, the overhead words. Just to show the location, and just, uh, as, as a reminder. Um, this previously came before, on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, where council approved City Plaza as the third location. So I'll keep it brief, but you can see there, um, my hand looks like. That green sp- green square there is where the location. Very brief, any questions?
Yes, I apologize, I was, sorry, this one is working, um. Does, would anyone have any questions, uh, Mr. Ilya?
Okay, I have a quick question.
Yes, Ms. Taylor.
I'm super excited about this, but I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about what the maintenance might be like.
Sure, uh, so they're maintained daily through, uh, One Tricky River with, uh, a wonderful guy named Reno. If you haven't met him, he is just awesome, works through the RISE program, a real success story. And so he maintains a pressure wash system. It is designed to be maintained regularly and very easy with the, the water pressure and sanitation.
Fantastic, thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry for clarification.
Why don't you come up?
We have a, we have a beautiful.
Can you come up? Can you come up? We, we really can't hear you today.
Iris Jalen Perrell, One Tricky River, um, for the records, and I just wanted to make a quick clarification. That we have an awesome hose, but it's not a power wash thing. But we, um, yeah. But we, um, yeah, like he said, uh, Reno, you, you, uh, we, what? Truck Meadows Water Authority contracts out One Truckee River to manage everything. Then One Truckee River contracts out Reno Initiative for Shelter and Quality to hire somebody to clean it daily. So, and the person we have now is awesome.
Thank you.
That's, that's perfect. Getting that on the record, thank you for asking that question. And I just have to thank um, both you, Nathan and um, Eric, uh, for working through this issue. You know, we, Councilmember Jordan and myself spent a fair amount of time talking about the location of this third Portland Lou. And after a great deal of uh, discussion, we settled on City Plaza and as we were beginning to move forward, it became that, maybe that was a concern or an issue. And so things went on pause again for a while, but then it got cleared up. And I'm just so happy we're moving forward today. And I understand that future development of the plaza maintenance does take moving the Portland Lou or incorporating it into a larger bathroom structure, let's say. But whatever it is, at least for now, we'll have a place. And, and it's for everyone, whether we're having a menorah lighting out there or, you know, someone is walking through, a tourist. Somebody's biking with their family. Someone needs to use a bathroom, there is one. That's fantastic. When do you think it will be installed?
There's Jaleel Pappal, screen of twenty twenty-four.
Fantastic. Alright, well, I'm uh, looking for a motion to approve this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion from Councilmember Taylor, second from Councilmember Reese. Um, are there any questions on the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Math, motion passes unanimously. Alright, and back to you, Madam Mayor.
Alright, thank you.
Would you like to sit over here? We have a great operating mic.
We have a great operating mic over here.
How does that happen? That one? Oh, we got two?
Yeah, the speakers now on and this is.
Alright, Madam Mayor, if you want, we're moving on to item C five, but we need to open redevelopment.
Yes, we do. Okay, good. Thank you so much, Madam Clark, for noticing. Go right ahead.
Okay, so we're gonna take roll on the redevelopment eight for Councilmember Reddick.
Here.
Your.
Yeah.
Martinez.
Here.
Ebert absent from time, Taylor.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a form of the redevelopment eight support.
Okay.
We're on item uh, A three for the redevelopment eight support. Public comment, I have a man in the red shirt. So if you're okay, we'll call this out, public comment. We're moving on to item A four, which is the third location.
Move to approve.
Second. Sorry. I was letting you manage. Okay, I got you. Alright, so we have.
We've got a motion from Councilmember Reese, the second from Mayor Chibi. Uh, are there any comments, questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes unanimously. And do we have to take a concurrent uh, vote on the redevelopment? No. Okay, so are we on D six then?
So we're on item A five, approval of the redevelopment eight for a minute for us over twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Ms. Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So we're now opening items C one and D five.
For C one and D five, let me just, uh, yeah, on the regular agenda. So, so D five, we have, uh, is there a presentation from Mr. McCardle? And your mic is working.
Okay, good. Good afternoon, Mayor, Madam Mayor, I'm Vice Mayor, Councilperson for the redevelopment agency board. Staff has received uh, two letters of interest from two adjacent property owner, leaseholders uh, who are currently operating businesses uh, along Four Street. And they both submitted letters of interest to purchase those properties from the city that are previously retract properties. Um, and so I can give a presentation if you'd like.
No, Vice Mayor, I don't know.
I just find this ironic because, oh, we're working with other people? Is that what we're doing on, on development?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't want that on the record from after that last.
Right.
That, that last, that.
Presentation.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And Mr. McCardle, you weren't here, but a long, long time ago, when we first started, uh, we had a direction from this board that we would always work with an adjoining property owner or someone that was on our property leasing to transition to owning and then paying taxes. Because when we own it, there's no taxes being paid, we own it. When it goes to private property, there are taxes being paid. So we, that was a resolution policy direction from this board nine years ago. So, maybe eight. Okay, so this is just a fulfillment of that policy. Wanna, anything more to say? Do you have a overhead picture?
No, if you would like a presentation on this topic, I could.
I mean, I, I know where it is, but it wouldn't hurt to just put up the map.
Great. Um, so uh, we have two different items. Uh, the first one, because there are two different properties and two different leaseholders, we parcel these up into two different agenda items. Yeah, sorry, Brian McCardle revitalization. So the first one, number one of the two is uh, the address is fifteen, ten West Four Street. It is currently, um, well, we received a letter of interest from, from Truckee River LLC, who is not only the, the owner of the building and the improvements, but they operate tr- uh, the trailer sales onsite. And we received a letter that they would like to, to purchase the property from that factory in the city. Um, and so the one on the left, uh, oh, one oh, six one oh, one two is the current one we're talking about. Um, following, we'll do the parcel just to the west. Uh, they're on Four Street, just west of Keystone. And just as a reminder, the city and the redevelopment agency came to own these properties to the retract project that was done in two thousand and six. Uh, when they were reparcelled, they were given a joint ownership act in the City of Reno as well as redevelopment agency. And that is why we require the redevelopment agency to also have some input in this uh, direction. Uh, there was a revenue bond on these properties that was paid off, and so now they're unencumbered and start selling off those properties in council's wishes. And moving back, just covering how does the city sell property, as you referenced earlier, and it could be public option. If, if the city so chooses to dispose a piece of property, it can go out to pro- public option and offer it to the public. Or we can use Nevada or vice statute two six eight oh six three, that says that if it's for redevelopment or economic development purpose, uh, the city can uh, sell a piece of property without making it available to the public. If it so chooses, can sell it for less than fair market value, if it is for a redevelopment or an economic development use. Um, this being a business that actually wants to maybe uh, reinvest in their property, do some improvements. Um, this would be, this would qualify as a redevelopment economic development uh, project. Uh, and if the city so chooses uh, to sell a property without taking it out to market, um, it must obtain appraisals. And then we would bring it back uh, before this body for a resolution that is in the best interest of the, of the public to sell these properties. And that is the process uh, to go through that. Now, uh, in the last five years, uh, the city has actually gone through and started disposing of the properties just west of Keystone. All the ones in blue have been previously sold, uh, starting with the Nader Gas Station on Four Street Keystone. Um, and over the last five years, they've been, they've been sold off. And most recently, earlier this year, uh, the city sold Eagle Window Door property with green ones on the left. Um, and so these two we're discussing today are the last two remaining parcels just west of Keystone. Uh, they are not in a redevelopment agency area, um, so therefore we cannot sell them for redevelopment agency purpose. Uh, and so we're, um, we will likely ask the redevelopment agency to reclaim their interest in these properties that the city can sell them uh, through, through uh, the city's process. Uh, this does align, so we can get it back on the property rolls, uh, this will sustainably, as well as we want to see them reinvesting in their property, making improvements, improving the area and the site, uh, increasing business activities, so it is an economic development purpose. And our recommendation is, all we're asking is to pursue the negotiations, get appraisals on the property. We'll bring it back before this body, uh, we have a proposed uh, price.
Alright, that was great. And especially that last map, it shows we've really made some progress in selling the properties, which was a, a goal of ours from the beginning, was to get these back on the actual, um, and put them to useful purpose. So at this time, any questions for our presenter? From the council?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Madam Mayor?
What is that? Maybe I just can't see it, so you might have to, um, so green, the green.
The green are the two that were sold. Uh, so that sale is currently in progress. And that is the Eagle Window Door site towards the end.
Oh, got it.
So those have already been agreed to be sold. They're just currently in process going to pass.
Okay, and so what was it? If they, who reached out to us? It looks like it's like a trailer.
Yeah, they're the current uh, leaseholder and operator of that business. It's a trailer sales. I think that is actual name of the, of the business is the trailer sales. Uh, the next agenda item is uh, Flyers Gas, Flyers Energy. They operate a gas station, commercial gas station on that site. They have for many, many years.
Okay. Alright, I, has there been any talk for like other improvements? I'm just curious. Like you said, cleaning it up, like honestly, we should be very cognizant of what people do with these parcels if they want to leave them, like parking lots where there's a lot of drug use on them? Or if you want, you know what I mean? Are we revitalizing it? I mean, this is what the plan is, long-term cleaning up, right?
Given the location, uh, it is not a strategic location that we would want to target for any sort of redevelopment. Uh, most, there are two operating businesses on the site, so we want to make sure that those businesses continue to operate and have the ability to make for future investments. Um, so if they're the, the tenant, the leasing tenant, uh, they may be hesitant to invest more in their own businesses if they don't own the parcel outright.
Um, but they can't keep them clean and that doesn't take an investment. That just takes them rolling up their sleeves and get it done. So, and I don't know these businesses. They might be great, like.
We can ask them to come back when we.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I would love to have the businesses come before us, but again, and I think this goes back to what I said earlier. Is, we work with everyone. These are, these are projects, these are developers, these are business owners in the City of Reno, just like we just, you know, the project that was just before us. So, um, I, you know, just want to put that on the record. So I'm just curious, like I said, if it was a, a parcel that was challenging in some way or, you know, something like that, but thank you, I appreciate it. Good job.
Alright, so let me see, are there any more comments or questions for Mr. McCardle? Alright, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion on item D five.
Move to proof staff recommendations as to D five and C one.
Thank you.
In the redevelopment agency packet.
I'll second. Alright, so I have a motion from Councilmember Reese, second by Madam Mayor. Are there any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, we will move forward with the vote. Everyone in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good job, Brian. You have number two for us.
Number two.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion on items D five and, oh, I'm sorry, D six and Charlie two.
Right, um, let me just ask, it's the same map you just showed essentially?
Probably the same relocation, except for the site photo is a little bit different of the Flyers Energy.
Okay. Alright, are there any questions by the presenter?
Madam, if I verify my, just, there is public comment on item D five and D six. There are one letters for on both items.
Okay. Alright, so since I have the mic, um, there was one letter of support on both items, uh, D five, C one, and D six, C two. Uh, thank you for letting us know. And then is there any further public comment in the audience on this?
There's no public comment registered and we have not received any of the public comment.
Alright, are there any questions of the presenter on the next parcel up for discussion? Alright, see, now I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion from Councilmember Reese, second from Councilmember Taylor. Any questions, comments on the motion? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimously. Good job, Brian. We are on our way to getting two more properties sold. That's fantastic. Alright, we're moving on to um, on the regular agenda, but let me just close out um, the redevelopment agenda. So we have uh, item D, there is no ordinances for either introduction or E, adoption. Any comments from the board for F? Mayor and council comments related to the redevelopment agency? See, now we'll close that out. There's no public hearings, a final public comment on this uh, agenda. Are there any? None registered? And then a motion for adjournment on the uh, redevelopment agency.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, I've got a motion from Councilmember Reese, second, Councilmember Taylor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed? Alright, we have unanimously closed out the redevelopment agency and we're back to the regular agenda for item E. Um, Madam Clark, you wanna? I know there's probably an ordinance introduction after the um, presentation.
Actually, we can have um, Mr. Hall read the bill numbers.
Okay, Mr. Hall. Read the bill number. Do you have an operating mic over there?
No, I was just gonna speak real loud.
Alright, great.
So this is uh, ordinance introduction, bill number seventy-two fifty-one, orders to amend file five of the redevelopment code entitled privilege, license permit, and franchises are repealing chapter five point one five entitled sidewalk vendor.
Secondly, ordinance introduction, bill number seventy-two fifty-two. Um, orders to amend title four entitled business code by creating chapter four point zero eight entitled sidewalk vendors together with matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith.
Alright, um, thank you, Mr. Hall. Back to you, Lance.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. For the record, Lance Ferraro, Director of Business Licensing. Today, before we introduce the new sidewalk many ordinance, as revealed in Senate Bill ninety-two, which adopted in the state legislature last session, as briefly presented, we'll go over some of the bill requirements and how it impacts the city as it relates to current regulations. Also summarize some council's direction, give it to staff, and go through recommended changes. So uh, here, here to remind you are some examples of what we're talking about. These are mobile carts or stationary stands that you might see on the sidewalk, not food trucks. I don't want to confuse the two. So some of the primary takeaways from SB ninety-two include provisions the city may adopt in ordinance to regulate sidewalk vendors. However, they cannot outright prohibit it. As you know, the city already regulates sidewalk vending, so we just need to amend our version. Another thing that can add into note is creation of the task force on safe sidewalking, which consists of nine members from the Health District, Business Licensing, Gaming Restaurant Industries, Law Enforcement, Secretary of State, as well as four members in large. Uh, the group will, will review existing laws recommended and recommend approaches to improvement through simplification of the process, removing unnecessary barriers, protecting public health, developing enforcement. So some of the state requirements that must be addressed in our code include the enforcement provisions, hours of operation, new distance and new distancing requirements. Specifically, meters are prohibited within fifteen hundred feet of a resort hotel or a convention facility. Lastly, the city is required to create a map to display all of their missed square areas. So this is a, a citywide map here. This gives you an idea of what, what the allowance base would be. You'll note the red lines which indicate private streets, which cannot be regulated by the city, and the blue areas are off limits. This is a bit of a zoomed-in map of downtown. Now, uh, this map's in draft form, so it doesn't account for the resort hotel, but as you can see, the downtown area would be essentially off limits going forward. You have basically from east to west Nevada Street, Valley Road, and north to south from about ninth street to the river. So a little bit about our current licensing process. First and foremost, applicants have to get approval from the Health Department. Once approved, they can apply to the city, which requires a state license, fingerprint submission, a background check. It's the middle of desired locations, which also requires a public area determination. As you can see, there are many layers to the process and it can be cumbersome when compared to other similar license types. Additionally, reviews can cost anywhere from seven hundred to nine hundred dollars, not including the whole department inspections. So based on what I've explained and regarding the changes in state law and SB ninety-two's general intent, council directed staff to move forward with the required changes to per state law and move the regulation to state, to title four, which will require requirements for a background check, remove location assignments, maintain our distancing requirements related to similar businesses and events, and so generally. And by doing so, you can see that the licensing process becomes much more shrinking. By removing the privilege aspect of the licensure, the barrier nature becomes significantly less, and furthermore, application licensure costs are reduced by one hundred and fifty percent. Lastly, we want to make sure that stakeholders are aware of this new requirement, so the licensing department will be working with the communications team to ensure the message delivered to multiple channels. We also intend to create learning opportunities for interested parties and we will continue to work together with our regional partners how they decide to receive. And with that, I'm happy answering questions.
Alright, Mr. Ferraro, I'll start with one question. Could you go back to the map that had the blue circle? And this, I think, is really important for both the council and the people listening to understand. Apparently, and, and you please tell us, didn't you say that the new state law, was it SB ninety-two?
Yes.
Uh, made it a new requirement that we didn't have before, that said, you cannot do a sidewalk vending within a fifteen hundred. you cannot do a sidewalk vending within a fifteen hundred feet of a casino resort.
Correct.
And you're saying the only group we have right now is the Row or Caesars?
Downtown, the Row is the resort hotel. It's only classified as a resort.
Okay.
And then we also have the two convention facilities, which are the bowling stadium and the event center.
And then you mentioned that um, City Hall itself is within fifteen hundred feet.
It is.
Okay, and the reason I asked this is that I had noticed, um, and this was last Veterans Day, that we had two vendors on the corner of uh, City Hall, and they were sending, selling some really cool merchandise related to Veterans Day. This is last year. I don't know about this year. And um, but what you told me is that with this new ordinance, they would not be allowed to sell right in front of City Hall, not because it's City Hall, but because it's within fifteen hundred feet of the casino resort.
That's correct, and also is within three hundred feet of a special event permit as well. Now, if they were uh, affiliated or um,
Part of the event.
Part of the event, and that's fine.
So we had an event, let's say that was just for art, and you're gonna sell art, and they, these aren't regular vendors. They're just here for the day. Um, and it was, let's say, at City Plaza. Is City Plaza also within fifteen hundred feet?
It is.
That they would be prohibited, but if they were part of the special event, they could be allowed.
Uh, yes, that that that's the case. Um, and and to be, to be completely transparent here, um, special events are are they're, they're, they're different than just our normal operation, right? So the fact that they are still within fifteen hundred feet of a resort hotel, that may cause an issue. We'll have to look at that and see if that's, if that's strictly eliminated.
Like, let's, for example, we have an event all up and down Virginia Street, and it goes all the way right to the front of the casino resort. Could we have sellers, you know, as part of that event? So that would be something that that'd be very useful to know.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, however, I've also seen, I asked you another question, I think is good for the council to know. I often see um, fruit vendors, let's say down by the convention center on airway or you know, different streets far from downtown, selling cherries, selling tomatoes, whatever. Tell me about that. You said that they have to be licensed by the Health Division?
That's right. If they're, if they're selling food, it has to be approved by the Health Department. And then before they can actually go do that, they they go to the Health Department, get approval, and then they have to come to the city and get a business license application.
But it would be this new kind, under this new parameter, no background check, no.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Um, that's my questions. Anyone else have any questions about this? Comments? Yep, uh, Mr. Reese?
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Ferrato. I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I know that um, much of this was um, the creation and creature of the Nevada Arts and Culture, but I do appreciate your leaning into and getting our city ready for it. Uh, this has been a topic of of like uh, conversation over at Northern Nevada Public Health. And I know that um, Senator Gutman Dodson is here and certainly could answer a question of this, but if anyone had them. I also want to mention that there was a considerable amount of work done on this by Make the Road Nevada, and you saw their folks were here today. In part because uh, many of these vendors are um, small business owners. Uh, and they are folks who find some of the barriers to entry into small business ownership, sort of entrepreneurship, very difficult. And so the intention, I think, uh, Senator uh, Donates uh, uh, bill was that we would create opportunities for people who are uh, working in this space to be successful and also meet the health requirements of a particular vending opportunity, right? Um, we want to make sure that while people are successful in their small business endeavor, that we have the tools that we need to make sure people are safe and that we are doing so in sort of an education-based mindset, meaning there's not a heavy hand of sort of enforcement or uh, policing going on, as it were, but more it's in order to make sure that people are undertaking the most, the best business practices as they get off the ground. And then also that they're making sure that food, uh, safety-related issues are really at the forefront. I'm not really familiar with the people selling chopskys. I'm more familiar with people selling like hot dogs, that kind of thing. And so again, um, I think that you and your team have done a very good job about getting us out in front of this conversation so that our community, although we are different in our approach perhaps, and meeting the number of these that are available than in Las Vegas, I think I've heard it said by many of the folks involved in the space that the city of Reno is the gold standard for how to implement this legislation. And I take that to mean that your leadership and the folks in code enforcement have really worked hard to make that happen. So um, great um, work on this. Um, I think it's an important uh, step in promoting and checking these small business entrepreneurs, and I'm happy that those folks will be able to enjoy the opportunity to do the work that they want to.
All right, thanks, Councilmember Reese. Anyone else? Let's hear it, Councilmember Taylor, did you have? No? Anyone else have comments, Mr. uh, Martinez?
Thanks so much. I appreciate it. Thanks, Ms. Ferrato, for the presentation and the overview um, of the ordinance and how we're in compliance, you know, with SB ninety two. Also want to thank um, our representative, who was down in Carson, Mr. Choney, for not keeping us informed what was going on over there and making sure that we were engaged in that conversation as the bill made its way through the process. Um, I also just want to make sure that I echo some of the comments from my colleague and say that uh, a lot of the comments that I have heard from uh, people around the states that we are sort of the gold standard uh, for implementing this ordinance and making sure that folks are paying attention to what we're doing in Northern Nevada and uh, allowing individuals who may be first time, business owners, entrepreneurs wanting to open up these uh, sidewalk vending uh, opportunities uh, to make sure that they're still in compliance with the laws that we're implementing, but also allowing the opportunities for those to actually take place. And so thank you for all your work there, and I just want to offer myself, if there's anything that we can do to increase the communication, education aspect of our community, I'm happy to help out in those aspects wherever you need. Thanks again for your leadership on this.
All right, um, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna be a no on this. I think um, you know, staff's been diligent, um, Mr. Choney and um, Ferrato. But I mean, you know, what Mr. Reese said and Mr. Martinez is, you know, how this is to provide access to small businesses. I mean, how can that be when they are basically uh, redlined out of downtown? I mean, it just, you know, it's, 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 and and it is, in my view, an example of Southern Nevada having an issue, wanting to fix it, and it doesn't work for, you know, I mean, I don't understand how the sidewalk vendors are getting redlined out of downtown where there's the greatest density of, you know, port traffic to do their small business activities. It's just, it it, it's misaligned. And so I'm not supporting it, and um, you you know, maybe it's working in Southern Nevada, but I think it's, it's it's doing counter impact in North, in downtown Reno.
All right, thank you. Um, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, thanks. Sorry, Madam. Um, so can we talk about that? I just want everyone to understand that that's state law. That has nothing to do with the council. Um, I would like that to change, but I just want everyone to know so that that doesn't become like, oh, look, because I am so pro-business, and I also believe in fighting for the the smallest um, businesses that we have, but the largest job creators in this country. So uh, but I do want everyone to know that. Maybe you want to just give a little bit of comments, Lance, on some of that uh, done with the legislature, so.
Yeah.
You should correct that, so it doesn't, I mean, that it's, again, the rhetoric.
You're correct.
Isn't ac- isn't accurate, and maybe you should correct that when that's not accurate. Well, I just want you to um, put those comments on the record, see?
Absolutely, yeah, uh, that is a requirement by state law, um, that was negotiated. And uh, Nick has probably a lot more background on that, and we'll hear some specifics, but it is absolutely a requirement of the bill, and it's state law.
And we have nothing to do with that. Last I checked, the council doesn't go to the legislature and make laws, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just a reminder, because again, the rhetoric looks like the council is being very anti-business, so.
So, and I, if I may, I was gonna follow up as well, because I had asked this exact question uh, to Mr. Ferrato. I had said, I don't understand, we've been having downtown vending. That's why I brought up the example of Veterans Day vending. And now we couldn't have it. Now we could have it looking at the map on the other side of the river.
That's right.
And also, it looks like um, by the time you maybe get to Arlington.
Yeah, I think it's about Nevada Street, uh, like I said, this is a draft form, um, but it, to the, to the west, it's about Nevada Street.
Okay, so what I had suggested, um, Mr. Ferrato said, because I brought up the same issue. I said, why didn't they do one for Southern Nevada? And a different one for us and other smaller towns, like Wendover, fifteen hundred feet, you know, you might be out of the town entirely. They might be at the far edges of the whole town. So he said that there's a working group and that they are going to potentially bring this back if there are changes that are desired, and I personally think, you know, when it comes to that, we should be directing our representative down there to talk about changing these distance requirements.
Right, so the task force, uh, they they meet, I believe it's gonna be quarterly, and they basically are required to report back to the legislature. And uh, it it's only what they've learned about the process, about enforcement techniques, uh, opportunities, reducing the barriers to entry. So I think this is gonna be something that pops up, you know, session to session with with tweaks. That could be one that happens.
Okay, one more question I had was, what is the difference between a hot dog vendor and a food truck? So they're both selling food. It's both hot food. So is it the size? Is it the vehicle? What what is it?
Yeah, by definition, the sidewalk vendor is somebody that's pushing, uh, has a mobile cart. Um, it it could be stationary, but it's, it's a cart in nature. Um, a food truck is a motorized mobile vending unit, so it's
And they're regulated under a different section.
It's under a different section. That's correct.
All right, are there any uh, final comments, questions?
Yeah, I just asked you also, like, I like seeing, you know, vendors downtown around. I just like it. A lot of cities have it, especially in their downtowns, and as we try to revitalize and activate our downtown. What about like someone selling artwork?
It would be similar, uh, to only to the extent of that there's, there's a little bit of gray area with artwork because it's first. Um, and we do regulate that separately as well, but uh, if you're talking about, and not necessarily artwork, but like merchandise, that would fall under your, under uh, sidewalk vending, um, you go through the same processes.
What about like a special event where we wanted to sell a commemorative T-shirt? Someone did too, is that? No, no?
As far as a special event, like someone else, a promoter's coming in and.
Or we did, or 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 as someone else, a promoter?
Yeah, it, we we would, we would vet the the application, and if there was any confusion as to First Amendment or just being an outright business opportunity for somebody, they'll need permission to report.
So just to recap.
All right.
You had said that if it's a special event and they have a special event permit, that it's possible that we could toll these requirements and have a separate overlay that goes with the special event.
I think that's something that we need to talk with the attorney's office about.
Yeah.
And maybe get some interpretation of what the.
Because what if we wanted to close down the street and do pop-up shops? Like, one of the things I would love to see is that Halloween time, you know, I don't know if people know this, it's the most deadliest holiday for children, Halloween is, and and usually, um, they, they get hit by cars. It's the deadliest. I did not know that. I think we should close down downtown, do pop-ups, and let the kids trick or treat uh, on the street safely. So what about something like that?
Yeah, and again, I think that that's something that we need to, we need to sit down and talk and see if that, if it conflicts the, the state law or not, um, being that it is a special event, there are special you know, circumstances I would, I would think, but um, we need to make sure that we, that all the, all possibilities and make sure that we're.
I guess I also, Lance, I I totally agree with you, right? Well, here's what I do get afraid of. Now, like your season, let's say we have a new person that comes into the city of Reno. This happened to me. Uh, and it's frustrating, and I know it's frustrating to you, right? Because you have to manage it. But let's say we have a new city, um, of Reno team member, and someone comes in and they want to do something, and they're like, oh, we can't do that. You know what I mean? Like, so you have to be so careful because the way in which we interpret things really can be so problematic, because like, I'll hear it all the time. Oh, I can't live in the city. I want to do this and this, and I'm like, what? And it wasn't really even a thing, but someone thought it was a thing. So, you know, it's just, I don't know.
Yeah, there are a lot of scenarios, and we try to make sure the staff's aware of all the possibilities, um, and and, you know, make sure that everybody's getting similar instruction and advice. Uh, it's, it's tricky, especially when somebody comes in with a great theme idea, and it's like, well, no, that's not considered, so.
Well, Lance, do you think we could get an answer before we come to the second reading of the ordinance on this issue about special events?
Yeah, I would see why that would be a problem. I'm sure we can figure that out.
I also just wanted to um, say my final comment was, I wanted to, you know, you and I, uh, mayor, have been on this for, I'm gonna say, eight years.
Yeah.
We have tried to get uh, vending legitimized, uh, the issues with art and First Amendment, um, sales versus merchandise sales sorted so that we're all on legal common ground. Um, it's been a long time coming, but at least we have a a framework to move forward now. Um, it is somewhat more restrictive, and and I don't think that makes any of us happy. You can hear the questions from Councilmember Breckus and the mayor and myself. We're all worried about, oh, restricting too much these sales. We want to make it easier, not harder. So make sure that you work hard with that task force, um, and get us some answers next time before we do the second reading.
Okay.
And I do want to say, if this is passed and goes into effect in January, we will be the first town in Reno, excuse me, in Nevada to enact this ordinance, it sounds like, in conformance with the new law.
To the best of my knowledge, I I think there's some other, others underway right now, but yeah, we'll be right, right there.
Okay, very good. Well, let me ask, are there any further comments, questions? Um, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve this.
Move to refer.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Reese, second from Councilmember Martinez to refer the ordinance for second reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Oh.
All right, uh, motion passes with one objection. All right, we're closing.
Okay. The motion for seven two five one, I'm looking for motion for seven two five two.
All right, may I get a motion for seven two five two?
Motion?
Second.
All right, motion from Madam Mayor, second from Councilmember Reese. Any comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, motion passes with one objection. All right, we um, you know, and you didn't say, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, did we have public comment on this?
We did not have.
Okay, I I mean, I'm sorry, you would have alerted me if we did. Uh, we're moving on to item F. We have no adoption ordinances. G, city clerk, G one. Um, is potential appointment of up to three individuals to the Reno Arts and Culture Commission? I think that's Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah, I'd like to um, uh, recommend Sierra Scott, Ian Watson, and Megan Miller.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for uh, Sierra Scott, Ian Watson, and the third one was Megan Miller. All right. And we have a second um, motion by, by Ms. Breckus, second by Mr. Reese. Any comments, thoughts?
I just wanted to say about that, you know, the rest of the council doesn't hold these appointments, I'd say, for any um, express support for people on those boards. I appreciate it.
All right, well, it's great. We're gonna get some new appointments, absolutely. So um, we have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. And we're now on to G two, which is potential appointment of up to three individuals for the Recreation and Parks Commission. And I believe I'm looking for Mr. Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor. I am happy to recommend Ian Anderson, Tara Webster, and Marie Kruger as our payments for the Rec and Parks Commission.
Second.
Great, so we have a motion from Mr. Martinez, second from Mr. Reese. Any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. So we have six new residents that are gonna be helping us on our various commissions yet. Uh, we're moving on to H, and it's city council comments, including any announcements, and this is related to your city boards and commissions. Let me just mention, we're always up for hearing some good news.
Good, I like it.
Any uh, information about any of your uh, commissions? Yes, Ms. Taylor?
Not on my commission, but I just wanted to make a comment, and I wish there were a whole bunch of people, more people in here. Um, specifically our fire department. There was a uh, fire this weekend over at the ballpark departments. And I have heard from everybody in our community how fantastic and amazing our firefighters were and how they saved that structure, and they worked tirelessly to do that. So hats off to them. Thank you very much. I know they're not here, but if you see them, tell them thank you, please. Thank you.
Well, that was fantastic. Um, I I gotta compliment our manager, I should text him at all hours of the night. Let me know how that was going, and uh, to our fire chief, who who the very next day also filled us in. So great comment. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're gonna close out item H one. Uh, there are no public hearings under aye. Uh, what about a final public comment?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We don't have any public comment registered at this time, however, we did receive one letter of opposition either federal or nature or the after four P M yesterday, because that has been distributed to the RISD council as a part of the record, and so we are on item A.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Never.
Looking for a second.
Second.
We have three seconds. We have three seconds. Mr. Reese, motion. Seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are hereby adjourned this most unusual meeting.
Most unusual.
Most unusual.
Yes.